Mr. Delgado, lead us in the pledge. Please rise, take your hat off, put your hand over your heart.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Shivi.
Here.
Brekis.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
George.
Here.
We'll now go to public comment section.
Good afternoon, Your Honor.
Good to see you.
And honorable council people. I don't have a rehearsed speech, I just wanted to thank the council and the City Attorney's Office through John Cadlec and his deputies for working with the citizens of Reno to improve legislation that you have on board today. It's Reno Municipal Code 4.04, has to do with the business license, and then 5.14, First Amendment issue, and 8.23 regulations regarding the park. We've been going on with this for quite a while, and I'm really impressed with the council. I like the fact that there is a subcommittee that was established where Steve White and Mike Schram work with certain members of the council. And I'm forgetting one name of one of the members, and so rather than leave that person out, I just want to just thank the council in general, so that I don't forget that one You all have done something that is the envy of cities all across America. You had divergent groups coming together, you had the people and the artists, the city council, and the attorney's office, who were not exactly aligned in wanting to get the same thing, and we compromised, we listened, we reasoned together, and today, we've got the first reading of those Reno municipal codes that I just mentioned. That is such an amazing thing for this city, and when this is passed, the end result is going to be, the special events will be even stronger, because we as the artists in this community did a couple of things with the legislation to ensure that there won't be any problem with that, such as the free speech areas, such as making the problematic issues that were part of the previous Reno municipal codes that were deemed to be unconstitutional or problematic. Basically, it's a heck of a lot better. It's an amazing code, and I hope that we adopt that, because it'll be good for the city, it'll be good for the people, just a wonderful coming together of both entities with both different agendas, but both for really the benefit of the city, to make the regulations better for the city of Reno. And I just wanted to thank you all for doing that, and I appreciate John Cadlec and the City Attorney's Office, and former deputy city attorney Craig Skow, that's now retired. And speaking of names, I'm forgetting the other attorney that is now working on that, but they're all doing a good job, and I thank you for your attention to this.
Thank you, thank you very much. Christopher Corbett.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Christopher Corbett, Panda, People Against the National Defense Authorization Act. Just here to read a resolution, another victory in the defense of civil liberties and unalienable rights, Resolution Number 340-14, a resolution of the Middleton City Council, Middleton County, Middleton Canyon County, Idaho. Whereas the city of Middleton, Idaho, is not a battlefield subject to the laws of war, and whereas the US Supreme Court has ruled that neither Congress nor the President can constitutionally authorize the detention and/or disposition of any person in the United States or citizen of the United States under the law of war who is not serving in the land or naval forces or in the militia when in actual service in time of war or public danger, and whereas the purposes of this resolution, the terms of rest, capture, detention under the law of war, disposition under the law of war, and law of war are used in the same sense and shall have the same meaning as such terms have in the 2012 NDAA Section 1021(c), and therefore be it resolved that notwithstanding any treaty, federal, state, or local law or authority enacted or claimed, including but not limited to an authorization for use of military force, National Defense Authorization Act, or any similar law or authority enacted or claimed by Congress or the office of the President directed at any person in Middleton who is not serving in the land or naval forces or in the militia when in actual service in time of war or public danger. It is unconstitutional and therefore unlawful for any person to a) arrest or capture any person in Middleton or citizen of Middleton within the United States with the intent of detention under the law of war, or b) actually subject a person in Middleton to disposition under the law of war, or c) subject any person to targeted killing in Middleton or citizen of Middleton within the United States, and be it further resolved that the city of Middleton requests the Idaho State Legislature recognize the duty of the state of Idaho to interpose itself between unconstitutional usurpations by the federal government or its agents and the people of this state, as well as the duty to defend the unalienable natural rights of the people, all of which is consistent with our oaths to defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Idaho against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and be it further resolved that the city of Middleton requests our congressional delegation commence immediately with efforts to repeal the unconstitutional sections of the 2012 NDAA to wit Section 1021 and 1022, and any other section or provision which shall have the same or substantially the same effect on any person in the United States not serving in the land or naval forces or in the militia when in actual service in time of war or public danger, and be it finally resolved that Middleton requests congressional delegation to introduce, support, and secure the passage of legislation which clearly states that Congress not only does not authorize, but in fact prohibits the use of military force, military detention, military trial, extraordinary rendition, or any other power of the law of war against any person in the United States not serving in the land or naval forces or in the militia when in actual service in the time of war or public danger. Recognizing our duty to defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Idaho.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Pass four, nothing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, because Mr. Corbett's been coming quite often over the last year, and it has been a year since I sought to ask this body to take either a proclamation or resolution action in opposition to the National Defense Authorization Act, and there's been evidence, widespread evidence, of Americans' privacy rights, and those of our allies abroad through surveillance of basically all of our phone calls, listening in on foreign leaders. If any of my colleagues find that compelling to make a statement from this body that we're concerned about our privacy rights, I'd encourage you, as our rules allow, to put it on the agenda for consideration. Thank you.
Donna Clontz.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members and city manager. I'm Donna Clontz, I live in Reno, and I'm chair of the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. I'd like to thank you again, council, for your support and for your time investment in seniors here in the community. Marcy Cooper-Smith and I, Marcy's our vice chair, have been making the rounds visiting with each one of the council members and the mayor to talk with you about your ideas about senior outreach and senior programs here in the community, and we're not quite finished with that yet, but we're using that input to carry on the ideas that come about in the community from the community itself of seniors and also of leaders like yourself. So we really need your input, and anything that you get from constituents that you need to pass on to us, please do that, we'd love to hear that. We've been really busy for the last couple of months. You've heard about our senior games success with over 400 seniors that attended the group of many activities that went on in February. We're working hard on the summer games, which will be in August this year, and we hope for even more senior involvement there. We'll be back to see you next month to get to Ashworth Proclamation for Older Americans Month, which is the month of May, and there are lots of activities that staff and volunteers are working on to involve city of Reno seniors, Sparks, the county, Incline, all over during the month of May. That'll be fun activities as well. And some of our outreach activities that I just wanted to touch on, to let you know and the community at large know, is that we're, we want to produce a television show by seniors, with seniors doing the work and about senior issues, and we're having our first meeting April 15th at 1:30, excuse me, at Neil Road, and everyone's invited. It will be in the Senior Connect magazine coming out in April. We're also putting a survey to seniors about how they like to be contacted with information about senior services in that same issue, so those of you out there who have information about that, we want to do a better job of getting information to you all about the fun things there are to do and the healthy things there are to do in the city of Reno. And there are going to be some changes on the city's website regarding how seniors can get access to a lot of this information. We had a great meeting with Deanna Gishider and her staff earlier this week, and some things are going to be changing to make that easier. Briefly, the funding that you've given us to do outreach in the community has gone toward a lot of those activities. We've also, at our last meeting, invited a lot of community agencies that work with seniors to come and get some assistance, and that information will be coming to you for your approval later in April. But it involves Food Bank, the Sanford Center, the Medicare Counseling at SHIP, the Alzheimer's Association, direct services to low-income seniors, and the last thing is an event that's coming up in April that I sent to everybody on email about free medical and dental services that will be available at HUG High School to any person in the community who shows up, whether they're an infant or a senior, medical, dental, and optical, free services for 800 people a day, and I'll leave these on the back table out front. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ronald McGee.
Good afternoon, or whatever, to the city council and the mayor, which I want to do 30 seconds on the mayor. I've had some good input from the, from Records Street about the mayor coming down there. I know he don't want me to tell you, but he donated $200 to a guy to get back to Oregon, which he didn't have to do, and the guy did make it back. Anyway, I'm still trying to get a crosswalk put down there. Chief Pitts can't help me. There's no crosswalk on Records Street. The sidewalks down there are filthy. Now, can't we get a steam cleaner down there? Okay, let's drop that. Okay, the next thing, I'm so disillusioned in senior rights that I designed a new card with a governor that your license goes in. It's handicap, it's the only thing people believe about handicap is the blue card. So you can wear it like this, and get on the bus, nobody hassles you. I'm double-disabled, but the police think I'm a 50-year-old tough guy. Mr. Pitts knows that. Okay, I'm an ex-boxer, I'm an ex-football player, I'm 70 years old in six months. They think I'm a 50-year-old tough guy. Now, I'm gonna skip over to this guy. He's the only guy that I see really putting a lot of input on the street with the people, talking to the people, bilingual. I watch everything, he knows. I haven't seen hardly nobody, it's a senior center, I'm there every day. The only one shows up is the mayor of both cities. Now, I'm gonna skip to one thing real quick. I want to see Chief Pitts take over Sparks PD. There's no reason to have them boys over there, put them together, give them a raise, send the assistant chief over there, and make him the assistant chief over in Sparks. Make Allen the lieutenant, I don't care. But anyway, there's a real problem. The only problem I'm getting from the streets, I talk to the people on the street, I'm getting bad input from Reno PD about the bike patrol, when the four guys are riding together on the sidewalk, which we can't. He'll solve it, but maybe should it go to those little scooters that they have at Meadowhead Mall, Segway, maybe that'd be better. Anyway, let me skip down crosswalks, Reno City Council, the election. Oh, well, Lorton, I'm backing Lorton all the way. I think you need new input. Cashill don't want to run no more, can't. I only got 36 seconds. There was something important I wanted to know. I wanted to say, oh, I started a new thing with Chief Police. Chief of Police said, "We're gonna wave to the police, and they're gonna wave to us. We're gonna acknowledge them, they're gonna acknowledge us, because we pay their wages." And it's gotta be turned around, where they come out and ask us if they can help us, not try to give us a ticket. Thank you. I'll save you 10 seconds.
Thank you. Billy Howard.
Billy Howard with an update on our signature campaign, Distinguished Mayor and Honorable Council Members. On July 6, 2013, the San Diego City Council, in one of their only unanimous votes, banned the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in retail stores. The next day, puppy-milk-free Reno was born. Since that time, I've accumulated over 6,100 signatures, 2,800 of them online in a petition I programmed myself and did not advertise on a national site like change.org. I estimate that 80% of the online signatures are from northern Nevadans, but it doesn't hurt to know that people from all over the country, and indeed from as far-flung places as South Africa, the Netherlands, and Camarouka, Australia, are watching what happens in Reno. 54% of our signatures were signed on printed hard copy petitions. Courageous and engaged citizens are asking people in homes, neighborhoods, on street corners, and at events throughout the Truckee Meadows to lend their voice to those that have none. These are them. There are many still out there, I guarantee you that someone nearby is signing this petition at this very moment. Additionally, 44 businesses and organizations have given endorsements to this movement, including such diverse locally-owned businesses as Cafe Deluxe, The Studio, Chapel of the Bells, A Doggy's Dream, Natural Paws, Healthy Tails, Sage Veterinary Care, The Cozy Cattery, Training by PJ, Dog Gone Amazing, Grateful Gardens, Juice, Feline Rescue, and the Nevada Humane Society, to name just a few. Nationally, 48 cities have enacted the same ban we are asking for. Oprah Winfrey devoted an entire program to the issue, stating, "It is my belief that when you actually see this America with your own eyes, that you are not going to stand for it." No animal should be the object of a credit card-enabled impulse purchase, as in how much is that doggie in the mall shop window? Dogs, cats, and rabbits are living, breathing, feeling creatures. We must welcome them into our home as family members, thinking ahead what their many and near constant needs will be. In conclusion, you've probably heard people refer to those of us in this countrywide movement as bleeding hearts, out-of-control animal activists, and the latest, animal rights terrorists. We are none of those things. We are, in fact, people who care about the treatment of all the creatures with whom we share our lives. We do this to help make the world we all share an even better place to live. We do this in the hope that if we treat all animals with the dignity and respect they deserve, perhaps we will all treat each other just that much better. For the 10,000 people who support this initiative in one way or another, I thank you in advance for your unanimous vote to make Reno, and indeed the whole world, a better place for all of us.
Thank you very much. Jeff Church.
Morning, folks, my name is Jeffrey Church. I'm a retired Reno police sergeant, and I live in south Reno. A couple of things I just want to make you aware of, some good news, after many years of not having it, the Nevada State Fair is back. Unfortunately, it's gonna be in Carson City, not Reno, but that's still good for Nevada tourism, so it's something we should support. I don't have the exact dates, but I think it's the end of July, so that should still be good for Reno, and hopefully we can support that and maybe even bring it back to Reno someday. I also want to commend the city council, I think you are taking the right steps in regards to labor negotiations. The negotiations are secret, but from what we know, you've realized that the lifetime health care for police and fire is not sustainable, and you also realize that Reno police and fire career officers are the highest paid in the United States, highest paid anywhere, and that's just not sustainable. Obviously, we deserve fair pay, but we just don't have the money to afford everything that we're giving out, especially the lifetime unfunded health care. And finally, along those lines, it's my understanding that some of those negotiations may end up in arbitration. Under the Nevada revised statute, arbitration is not secret, and it's open to all, and the quote is, "interested parties." As a retiree, getting some of that health care, I think I'm an interested party, and I also think all taxpayers are interested parties, so I hope that you would not oppose the concept of interested parties attending arbitration. And just a final comment, since I probably can't wait till item F2 on the tax district. Reno is the highest taxed city in the state, and I just don't think that it's fair to expand that tax district to the other citizens of Reno, so I think we should just keep it right where it is. We're already the highest taxed, and my opinion is no more taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Markell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, senior council members, and city manager. My name is Mark Markell, and my mission in life is to educate students in the community about what happens when someone gets in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this because I suffer from a traumatic brain injury, and get off-check sometimes. In the city of Reno, in January 1st through March 24th, 2013, there were 188 DUI arrests and 38 DUI crashes and no fatalities. In the city of Reno, in January 1st through March 24th, 2014, there were 161 arrests, 50 crashes, and no DUI fatalities. That's a good job. Through my iPad, people against drunk driving, I hope to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences that I have. Parents, don't drive drunk with your kids in the car. Kids, listen to your parents, they're young ones too, and listen to your teachers, they just wanna make good citizens of you. They're there to help. I never listened to either one, and look what happened to me. My life is completely changed as a result of getting in the car with a drunk driver. Please don't let this happen to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good message. Sam Denae.
Sam Denae, Encyclopedia of Reno Government. Sam, that's me, is an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border, and I found out that we have more enemies inside of the border, and the worst enemy in all of Reno, the worst enemy in all of Reno, is not the government and the bureaucrats, the worst enemy in all of Reno is the Reno Gazette Regurgitator newspaper, which is a quasi-governmental propaganda hogwash machine. They try to say that they're a free enterprise, they're not. They are heavily supported and funded by your taxes and the government. People ask me, "Why do you call yourself the Encyclopedia of Reno Government?" Well, maybe, and maybe you people wonder too, I am the Encyclopedia of Reno Government. Nobody's ever challenged me, they just ask why I call myself that. I used to be a pilot for Pan Am, and after Pan Am was blown out of business over Lockerbie by the terrorists, I started coming to these meetings in 1994, when some of you folks out there weren't even out of high school yet, and I've been to every single meeting, minus about four, since then. 3,275 meetings, 6,454 public testimonies, many of them on YouTube. That's why I call myself the encyclopedia, because I watch this stuff, I see it every day, and I do it all philanthropically, fancy word, I do it for free. I was trained at the Air Force Academy, the government paid for my education, paid me a few bucks, and I owe it to the world, and the country, and the city, to come down here and keep monitoring and working out on the oath that I took when I graduated. At any rate, a lot of people said some nice, a few people said some nice things to you guys, I'm not here to say anything nice, but I'm not taking anything, any giving you any discredit, because you didn't have a chance to start with, with a thing that calls himself the Reno Gazette Regurgitator, running around amok. You guys didn't have a chance. You could make any decision you wanted and get away with it, there was only one voice challenging you, and that was, guess who? Sam Denae. Sam Denae challenged you. You did a few things right, don't get me wrong, but I challenged you and your cohorts and your predecessors more times than all the citizens in Reno added together. I've even had the police come up here and tell me that I'm talking too loud. Am I talking too loud? Well, I am vehement, I have to say that. This name right here is the most feared name in all of Reno, maybe all of America. The Reno Gazette Regurgitator, and you can do this when you see that name, the Reno Gazette Regurgitator sees this name, and they have fits, their pants get dirty. I looked in the dictionary to come up with some adjectives that I close out for the Reno Gazette, and there weren't enough adjectives in there, so I'll just name a few of them. The Reno Gazette Regurgitator is corrupt, mendacious, perverted, deceptive, rotten, evil, wicked, sleazy, slimy. Oh, and they also are liars. The Reno Gazette is not a free enterprise newspaper, it's a quasi-governmental-funded propaganda machine that is afraid and scared to death of that name. The next man for Reno mayor, 25,000 votes, and he's already had 25,000 votes against the mighty Bob Cashell last time as the challenger, and never a word in the Reno Gazette. Thank you for the extra 10 seconds.
Welcome to Reno City Council, everybody. Mr. City Manager, you have some reports.
I do, Mr. Mayor. Happy to announce that the city of Reno has partnered with other community partners, and we will be having a David Wise Parade of Champions. The parade will celebrate David Wise's recent achievement as a gold medalist at the 2014 Winter Olympic Games. The parade will also include other Winter Olympians with connections to Reno and the greater Reno Tahoe area. The city of Reno has also partnered with the Reno Aces to tie the April 26, 2014 Aces Home Game to the parade as well. The parade details, the parade will begin at 5:00 PM and is expected to end at approximately 5:30. David Wise and the other participating Olympians will sign autographs before the game begins at 6:35, and again, that's on Saturday, April 26. Also happy to announce the Ninth Street Neighborhood Cleanup Day. Council member Oscar Delgado and the city of Reno have collaborated with community partners to provide a free neighborhood cleanup dump day for residents of Reno's Ninth Street area. On Saturday, March 29, from 9:00 AM to noon, large dumpsters will be available at the Boys and Girls Club of Truckee Meadows parking lot. Participants must prove they live or own property in the neighborhood, and are encouraged to bring a picture ID or utility bill. To participate or for more information, you can visit reno.gov/cleanup, or you can call Reno Direct at 334INFO. Also want to announce the Fire Station 12 grand opening. City of Reno is proud to announce the grand opening of the Damone Ranch Fire Station Number 12. There will be a pancake breakfast and open house for the public on Saturday, April 5, from 9:00 AM to noon to celebrate the opening of Reno's newest fire station. Guests will be able to tour the facilities. In addition, the Reno Fire Department will be giving away free ADA-compliant smoke detectors, as well as alarms specially made to... as well as alarms specially made to alert deaf persons. And lastly, want to make an announcement about our community forums. Our newly approved community engagement program will commence with our inaugural community forum on April 17 at the Women and Children's Center of the Sierra from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Six ward-specific forums will be held quarterly and allow citizens to interact with their local council members and help effect change in the city of Reno. Residents will hear city updates and are urged to share their vision and ideas about Reno's future. And citizens can find more information at reno.gov/community.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Should be a lot of fun having that parade for Mr. Wise and the rest of the Olympians. Before we go to approval of the agenda, item D1 has been pulled. Proclamations for Housing Month. Presentations, item D2, Reno Citizens Institute Graduation. Item D3, Economic Development Update. And item D4, update on solid waste collection and single-stream recycling. Their school zonings, item F1 and F2 is downtown police, a special assessment district. There is no public hearing this evening at 6:00. Any other changes? Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to item A7, approval of the minutes for March 12. Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash disbursements, any declared? Chair entertain a motion? Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item C1, proclamation declaring Fair Housing Month.
Please have the Silver State Fair Housing Council.
Mayor, City Council, it's an honor for me to present this proclamation. I know Councilwoman Sheevy should be up here, but geez, I'm taking her place. She forgot her glasses. It's all good. Whereas April 14 marks the 46th anniversary of the Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Federal Fair Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in the state and the sale, rental, and financing of housing and prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 added familial status and handicap to those classes protected by the Title VIII, and added strong new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and judicial and administrative enforcement procedures. And whereas Nevada state law includes additional protections based on ancestry, sexual orientation, and gender identity and expression. And whereas in the solemn and sworn duty of government at all levels to defend the rights of all citizens and oppose housing discrimination whenever and wherever it occurs. And whereas illegal barriers and equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, that diminish the rights of some of our citizens diminish the rights of all. And whereas Silver State Fair Housing Council actively works to ensure equal housing opportunity for all people in the Truckee Meadows to freely choose where they want and can afford to live. And whereas the city of Reno supports the efforts of the Silver State Fair Housing Council and all other agencies pursuing fair housing. Now therefore, I, Oscar Delgado, and the City Council, and the mayor, Bob Kachel, now will state that April 2014 is Fair Housing Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council and City Manager. For the opportunity to speak before you, my name is Roberto Ortiz, and I'm the Director of Programs for Silver State Fair Housing Council, a number of our agency with a mission to ensure equal housing opportunity for all residents of Nevada. Our agency has a long and productive relationship with the city of Reno, providing fair housing awareness and advocacy to the Reno residents and housing providers under the CDVG program. On behalf of the board and the staff of Silver State Fair Housing Council, thank you for your continuing effort to affirmatively further fair housing in the city of Reno. We believe that equal housing opportunity allows us to break down barriers in the community and relate each other as neighbors and individuals. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll go to item D2, Reno Citizens Institute Graduation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Lisa Mann, Community Liaison, along with Barbara DiCiano, my fellow liaison. We are very pleased to recognize the spring 2014 class of the Reno Citizens Institute, better known as RCI. RCI is just one of the many citizen engagement programs offered through the city's Office of Communications and Community Engagement to get our residents involved and to learn more about our city. RCI is an eight-week course where participants attend presentations from each city department, including tours of city facilities. They also got to design a city park, participate in a mock planning commission meeting, CAK9 demonstration, and much more. Twenty participants qualified for graduation today, including 11 who had perfect attendance, meaning they attended all eight sessions. We now have well over 800 citizens who have completed the RCI program. This session, as usual, we had couples who made this their Tuesday night date night, a mom and a daughter, attorneys, planners, retirees, and many local professionals and leaders in our community. Two of the survey comments included, "Thank you for the opportunity to have been part of the RCI program. I learned so much, and I am so proud to call Reno my new home. I think this is a great program. I plan to promote RCI in all the professional organizations I'm involved in." So we would like to thank you, our City Council, for the support and resources to continue this very worthwhile program, and to all the departments for their hard work and enthusiasm in their presentations. Now, we are going to recognize our graduates. Unfortunately, many of them had conflicts today, but we are thrilled that some of our folks can make it today. So if you folks can just come up when we call your name. Diane Arkel. Jessica Cunningham.
When you have them come up, have them come around here, so we can shake hands with them.
Okay. Did you hear, Mr. Mayor? Go up around and shake hands with our council members, please. Jessica. Adam Chakowski. Stanley Ann Doughty. Stanley.
Just show me. I guess we're not doing a good picture. It's all right.
Tickle me or something. I can't smile.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a quick question?
No. Okay.
Can you tell me from the participation, how it's trending? I mean, are we finding more people engaging, fewer? How's it going?
Honestly, we are finding more. And one of ours was Wood Rogers. They had seven members of their staff come. So we, you know, we're going to work now with other businesses. And I mean, honestly, they were here at every, and one of the gentlemen that was a planner there, too, his wife came. So then, you know, she told some of her friends about it, too. So our encouragement is that we're going to go to other businesses and say, "Bring a group of your folks to learn more about every city department." And they said it was so worthwhile to do that, so.
That's fantastic. Great. Thank you.
And I'll just add really quick. As an alum of the RCI myself, I think it's a great program. You guys are doing a great job. And so if there's any way we can help spread the word, I think it's an awesome program that we need to keep pushing. Thanks, Lisa, and thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
I mean, one of the members just told us that they were here, they've lived here for 40 years, and they learned more than they thought they could. Where are you? Who just told you that? Yeah. Forty years she's lived here, but she learned a whole bunch.
It's a great program. We're happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Steph. All right. Economic Development Update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We are here to present a very exciting collaboration between the city of Reno and TMCC. It was actually the Special Events Subcommittee of the Reno City Council, and led by Councilwoman Zadra, as an initiative to learn how we could better serve the special events community. So what we came away with as things that we would like to improve on are, how do we further help special event promoters through the process, the special event process? And how do we expand the special events calendar and create new and very viable events? So we came up with the idea of perhaps educating the workforce, and TMCC has supported us with this. Could you cue the slide thing? Thanks. Okay. It's a special events management certificate through the TMCC, and the class has three elements, an expert lecture series. And just to give you an idea of the people who will be speaking at this class, it will be hot August nights, Reno rodeo, Reno street food, so food trucks, the owner of Reno MV, Southern Wine and Spirits, RCVA, the owner of the Bowserman Group, Art Town, and people who put on races in downtown Reno. The students will also be learning about risk management and special event considerations on how to work with the government. So that will be the last part of the lecture series. And then they'll have an internship experience. More than 20 special event promoters in the area have said that they would like to have interns at their program, so we're giving them that experience. And the promoters will be able to, or the future promoters will be able to go to an Art Town event and utilize the skills that they learned in the class and evaluate that event. And so the class details, it's May through June for the lecture series, and then they will come back in July to discuss their, the Art Town event that they evaluated, and August to discuss their internship. And I'd now like to introduce Nicole McDowell. She's from Truckee Meadows Community College. She's the Program Manager of the Workforce Development and Continuing Education Program, and she'll let you know the other really neat initiatives she's doing to get people back to work.
Thank you, Alexis. Thank you to the mayor and the council for giving me the chance to come and speak to you. Very excited about the economic development that we're doing over at Truckee Meadows Community College in the workforce development section. Our whole motto at Community College is to get you in, get you out, and back into the workforce. So our division of the college really looks at short-term accelerated training, two to four months to get you job-ready skills. So I work very closely with industries, especially the nine industry sectors that Governor Sandoval has deemed as growth areas for northern Nevada and Nevada as a whole. And we have tried to create career certificate programs that are non-credit accelerated programs to get you in, out, and back into the workforce. So these are some of the opportunities that we have for community members. It's a very easy process to come in and register with us. It doesn't require registration with the college. You can just come into our office off of Neal Road and register for one of these courses. And you can see that all of our programs are very well researched. We make sure that the job growth is above 11%, that the BLS shows nationwide. Event special management is at the bottom, and it's very exciting to see a 33% job growth rate through the year 2020. So excited to partner with the city of Reno and create other local partnerships to get community members in, out, and back into the workforce. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can add really quick?
Yes.
I just, as more of a comment, I actually spoke to several UNR students yesterday, and some of them have already heard about this program, and they're excited to participate in the special events, as we're a special events town. So great job, Alexis. Great job, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to give huge credit to TMCC. This is an idea that I discussed with staff just a year ago, and in a year's time, we built a relationship with TMCC. They continually step up to the plate to fill the needs of our economic development in our community. Really good job.
All right. Now we'll go to item D4, Solid Waste Update.
You took me by surprise.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, Councilmembers, Greg Martinelli, on behalf of Waste Management. The manager's office asked us to come and give you kind of an update on how the rollout of the single-stream program's been going. And so we put together a little slide deck for you that I'd like to go through and then obviously get to the last page, which take your questions on pending issues, I'm sure that you have. So the first slide shows you the exact, the actual numbers that we've been dealing with since we started in January and rolling out the carts. So the recycling carts were predicated on everyone in town having a recycling cart. That has not been the case. We've had folks that have rejected their carts. They don't want them. They've dropped them off at my office. They've asked us to come pick them up. So when you try to do the math, the math's not going to work for you because they're not, those are what we put out. That's not actually what's in play today. So, and then on the trash cart side, there were a number of citizens that did not have any containerized service at all. So the new franchise required that everybody have some sort of containerized service at a 35, 64, 96-gallon level. So those are the breakdowns that are actually occurring today, and they're still evolving because folks are still asking that we switch things out. A lot of folks have realized how small that 35 is and have asked us to come and give them a larger container. So that's a continuing process. Also on that is, we've had situations where people that live in HOAs wanted one thing, their HOA has made a decision that as a community, they're going to have another thing. So we've had development issues on that that we're dealing with. When we put this out, this was, we contracted with the company that provided us the carts. They hired an outside agency who used local temporary labor to do the deployment, and they hired about 45 temporary laborers during that period. We've completed the construction of the CNG fueling station and the upgrades in our shop that amounted to about 41 jobs of various construction types. And then we've got seven temporary administrative folks on board right now that are helping to deal with what we're basically calling exceptions. So exceptions are calls that we received when this started to roll out, people hadn't gotten their cart yet. So it was before the deployment was over, and they may have got their cart, but we don't know, so we've got to call them and find out. So these folks are actually making proactive calls to try to deal with those issues as to whether they did in fact get their cart, is their cart the right size? If there was something we needed to recover, has that been recovered? So that's what those jobs are doing right now. From a participation standpoint, we have been just overwhelmingly positive about what's transpired. In some neighborhoods, the participation is just 90%. The material that's going into these containers is clean, and when I say that, I'm referring to the fact that the residential customer is actually putting inside the container what belongs in the container. There's very little contamination. As you can see, from a year-ago period, we've added about 1,000 tons of material to the recyclable products, which is very, very encouraging, actually higher than what we originally anticipated. This slide, kind of, over this period, we've looked at what the contamination rate is, and it's 8.4%. Anything less than 10 is exceptional, so we're very happy to see that. During the rollout period, we have not been implementing every facet of the franchise. We've been just picking up whatever's out there. If the recycling is contaminated, one of these stickers is placed on the cart, so the customer knows that there's something wrong with it. We haven't had a lot of those go out, because quite frankly, what they've been putting in the cart has been exceptional. These are the type of materials that we've collected, and their percentages, as you can see, the highest percentage is newspapers, and then glass, and that's just how see, the highest percentage is newspapers and then glass and that just how it breaks out. So there's, as we've added more material that's allowed to be collected, the cardboard was never allowed in the past and so that we've seen a little uptick there, which is very encouraging. These are, these are the products and we added in there. So when you're, you know, somebody's talking about colored HDPE, you know what that is. You know, it's basically your laundry room. But that's, that's the products that have been recycled and the end destination. So as you can see, a lot of the material ends up overseas and not much of it ends up here domestically. So some of the outstanding issues we're still dealing with are the container mix with the various customers based on what their wishes are. We have a fairly significant issue with what we call as master build accounts. And these are, these are basically customers that have more than one established in a mobile home park, a rental property, those type of things, and they're billed to one person. So if Mr. Klinger has four rental properties, but he wants all of the bills going to him, he gets all the bills. Well, what's that created for us is that under the program, his four properties would have been entitled to 20 stickers per property. Well, the computer only read that Mr. Klinger gets the address, so he only got 20 stickers. He's still entitled to 60 more stickers. So we've got a pretty significant problem. There's 832 accounts like this that we're dealing with. And so we've got to get those cleaned up. Obviously, we're going to have to deal with credits on accounts that don't have the correct services that they should have. We have folks that just plain abandon their carts. They're still sitting in the street where we delivered them to. Your staff has asked us to go ahead and recover those and note on the customer accounts that we've recovered them. And then we've had a lot of folks drop off their 35 gallon carts with us because they don't want them, not understanding that the program requires that they have some level of containerized service. This is an insert that's going to go out in the April bills, just kind of continuing education about the things that don't belong in your cart. You can't see it up there. I can't see it anyway, but just talks about the type of things that should not go in your recycling cart, even though the label on the top that's been embossed on the lid does show you what can go in there. This is just a continual reminder to help with the things that shouldn't go in there. This talks a little bit about the ways for people to go and view what their recycling day is. They can go to link, start to type in their address. It looks like the following page and it will, it'll pop up their recycling day. We don't have this in real time, so we can't show you what it looks like, but you type in your address there and it'll pop up the address and it gets you on your cycle of your every other week. Part of the franchise requirements is access to the transfer station four times per year up to, for three yards of disposal whenever you want. This is the number of trips that we've had so far this year for folks that have used it. I just had an interesting one pop up on my desk this morning. We had a lady show up with 12 yards and she got a bill for three yards and decided she wanted to use all four for trips all at one time. So we just have to go back and get that fixed with her, but kind of a unique thing that popped up. These are the, these are the excess stickers that we'll start to look for starting next month. And we've got to deliver the balance of the stickers that are owed to the customers in the April billing. When we originally drafted the franchise language, R. Donnelly told us that they could include 20 stickers in a mailing in their inserts. And after we got it all put together, they cannot, they can only do 12. So we owe the customer base eight. Now, there are some folks that are billed auto pay customers. They received all theirs because they received a direct billing from us, but there's only about 10,000 out of the 62. We have the compressed natural gas trucks are in place. They've been here since the middle of January. They've been servicing customers since the first part of February. The CNG fueling station is, is complete at what we're calling Phase One. I mean, the construction's complete. It's operational, but in part of our requirements with your building department is we have, we have other things that go along with the other part of the master plan down there that have to be completed. So those will be done, but that facility is operational. We had to enter into a reciprocal agreement with the RTC because we needed some redundancy for system failures, which has worked out well for both of us because we both had to use each other's facilities. So it worked out really well. Otherwise, there's no place else to get compressed natural gas here in town. We, the compactors, we provided you with 12 last year. We still owe you 13, which will be here next month. That you're going to, my understanding is you're going to still use in your downtown corridor. And on the ECO Center, the Planning Commission approved the, our proposal in January. We're getting ready to submit the relocation of our operations center to your building department shortly so that we can start doing site work in May and start construction in June. And then the RFP for the ECO Center itself is going to go out this summer and construction will start. And unknown what comes back on that, but your, the planning department had about 17 conditions on our special use permit that we need to deal with. So, but it'll be completed sometime next year. Any questions? Questions?
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I thought the mayor was. Thank you for that presentation. You touched on a lot of the questions I developed over the couple of months based upon input from constituents and my own thoughts. I am noticing that it's still patchy out there in terms of, you know, who's gotten their new carts or who's had their carts picked up. My neighbor's called and he hasn't had his cart replaced. And then we have a rental down the alley and it got the new cart, the smaller one, but it still has the old one. Are those, how are those being followed up on? I mean...
I don't mean to make light of your question, but I just, I just find it ironic that, you know, we put up that, we put out that website at the beginning for people to let us know what they want. And out of this body, the only person that told us what they wanted was Jenny and we screwed up her delivery. So, yeah. Don't know how we did it, but we managed to screw hers up. And we did get it corrected. And, but anyway, that was part of what those seven admin positions are doing.
Okay.
All of our, all of our activities are generated by what we call a ticket. So the ticket generates the activity from the customer. And whether this is one of those that occurred prior to us getting it, there's an active ticket for this customer. So we're actually calling that customer. Did we in fact pick up what you wanted?
Okay.
What's transpired in this situation and now we picked up the home of the dead, she didn't want us to pick up anything and we took her cart. Two of her carts. They took my parents' cart. I mean, then I found out after the fact that we'd actually given them incentive for the number of carts that they recovered. So, you know.
Oh, there you go. Well, okay. So on the rental, I do need to call and say, hey, I've got my one, I need to start a tickler.
If there is a one, we'll get it recovered, yes.
And I'm just using myself as an example. Now, a lot of people, maybe my colleagues are the one, you know, who did not decide what they want. Now, you bill on a quarterly basis, right?
Yes.
So say, two months in, Councilmember Delgado says, I want the smaller one. Is he going to have to pay for a whole quarter of the larger size? Or will you be, is everyone who did not make a choice in for the higher payment that first quarter until they figure it out?
When we, when we bill this month, when we had the, when we had the deployment company, part of their bid process was they had to be able to give us a database back that we could then upload into our billing system, which we're doing now. Once that's uploaded, we're going to bill for Q2 what actually was delivered. And surprisingly, the default looks like, we thought it was going to be 64, 96. The default seems to be 96, 96.
And so that's more spendy.
That's the most expensive option, yes.
Okay.
That's the most expensive option.
So people have to figure it out, basically.
Right. And that's why originally we asked them to, you know, kind of hold on to your container for six months to see what ends up meeting your needs. I mean, a lot of folks that selected the smaller container, once they got it, they realized it's small. I mean, I know you have a small one, but you do compost in your backyard and you do some of those other things that a lot, the normal household is not going to do.
Yeah. Well, I think we're going to be hurting leaf season. I'll see how that works out. And I know a lot of Ward One constituents are concerned also. Now, did I see somewhere in some of the correspondence that you might be providing the smaller recycling cart option out to people? That that might switch up? Or is that something I didn't see? That the 35 gallon would become a recycle option?
Well, we never offered it originally. I mean, I don't see any value in that at all because it's just such a small container.
But, you know, I do hear from elderly folks and I know there's the waiver for elderly and disabled to have the extra service, but the single-family household formation is the fastest-growing household formation across the country, just straight. So we've got more singles living alone and they produce more, less waste. I had thought that there was an agreement, we were going to go that way, but I understand.
I think that, you know, we're working on a list with your staff.
Yeah.
Some things that we missed that maybe weren't correct that we need to true up and that might be one of them.
Okay.
But I mean, when you see how small that container is, it's just, and it's going to go for two weeks. If you're using it for, if you're just putting, you know, plastic bottles, cans and bottles in it, but if you start doing cardboard in that, it's going to fill up awful fast.
I know, but a lot of people just claim they don't, you know, buy a lot of stuff. I guess the other thing is on the ECO Center, how are you doing this much recovery of all these new materials if the ECO Center isn't being built? Are you, where are you sorting? Or is just, are we just sending more stuff to Lockwood? Are we getting the tonnage of how it's selling, where it's selling and what's going to Lockwood?
We're transloading that material into walking floor trailers and we're taking it over into a facility in California. And there it's being processed with other material. I mean, our stuff is segregated out, not for, not for processing, but we, otherwise I wouldn't have those numbers to know what we, what we pulled in. And it's being bailed and prepared for, prepared for sale.
Okay, okay. And then my, my next question is property. Did we sell you a couple of properties as part of this transaction?
Well...
Or a separate?
Yeah, we bought the, we bought the property across the street from our transfer station facility in 2010, I believe. It was, it was encumbered by bonds and so it was quite a cumbersome process. We've asked you for a price for a piece of property we rent from you, or leased from you on the corner of Sage and Commercial that's just down from your yard. But there hasn't been any other properties.
Okay. What I'm getting at is, I had a constituent reach out to me about the condition of the area over there. I went over and looked at it. I'm also dealing with a lot of constituents when they expand a property where they do business and you have a business license. If it's a parking area, they have to improve it into a parking area. And I saw that we have a, that parcel I think that we sold is your employees parked there. It's not a paved lot. And that raised another question to me. Do you all have an air quality permit under Washoe County? Are you required to have one?
Yes.
And is it being, is the air quality, you know, being addressed through this dirt parking lot? Because we, we really don't allow those. A lot of people, we have to hold you to the same standards, obviously, as everyone else.
We're in compliance with all the health regulations and your regulations, yes.
Okay. But as the parking came up, did you amend your business license to show that you're doing business on these parcels you acquire? Do you...
I don't know.
Okay. I think that is an issue for staff to address. And then, do you know where the compact solar big bellies are going around downtown or?
I do not. They're yours. That's your choice to do what you want with them.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have one question and then a comment.
Did you get your containers back?
I got my containers back. It was one of those, I walked out and all of a sudden there was nothing. I didn't know where to put my trash. My question is, okay, so your recycling truck comes around and you've got your blue topped can out there and you've put your recycling materials in it. And let's say I mistakenly threw a bag of food waste in the recycling and it gets dumped into your recycling truck and you go on your way. I saw the notification up there where obviously you're not supposed to do that, but how do you know who the offender is? Once the trash bag's in your recycling truck, how do you know to pinpoint it back to where?
Well, it would occur, it has to occur at the time that it's picked up. Otherwise, you wouldn't know.
That's what I was wondering. I mean, how are we going to enforce?
Yeah, we wouldn't know.
Okay.
We wouldn't know how it's, whose house it is unless we actually see what's in the container.
That's what I was wondering.
It just depends on what application you're using for, you know, we have, these particular trucks that we're using are, they're called Carrados. And so they have a, they have a bucket on the front of it that has the alarm arm that comes off of that that dumps the container. So when the driver picks it up, he can see, he's looking right down in the, in the, in the container on the front of his truck so he can see what he dumps in it.
Okay.
So that's, that's how he would know.
That was a curiosity. I just don't know how that would ever be.
But honestly, everybody here should be proud of the way people are handling this. The material, I mean, people probably think I'm a nutcase because when this first started, I was out driving in neighborhoods, looking underneath garbage cans and he probably got some, Steve probably got some calls on this weirdo out there looking in garbage cans. But, you know, it's, it's just, it's flat impressive.
Well, let me just give you a practical application. So at my household with a full family and kids in and out all the time, let's just say we didn't recycle as much as in the past. And so we got our new recycle bins and our trash can. And there were still the questions of, well, what is really supposed to go in what? And should that go in that one or should it go in that one? So all, everybody that got this neat little flyer with their trash cans, here's what we did at our house, is we tore these two pages out, which have great little color graphics, and we taped one to each top of each either can in your house or out in your garage. And it was a beautiful visual to get us into the habit of what goes in which can. So I appreciated this from a practical usage standpoint and I encourage everybody, if you're confused as to does that yogurt container go there or not, this is a great thing to tape on the top of the trash cans.
Mr. Martinelli, I had a constituent ask me the other day if you could just clarify this for me. So if I own an apartment complex and I'm not using 20 of our carts and then we give them back to you, do we still get charged?
Yes.
So I'm kind of wondering, have you thought about maybe doing sort of a donation process or a trading process with maybe seniors that can't afford it? Because I have had a lot of complaints from seniors that really can't afford, you know, this process. So I was just wondering if you've had any idea of anyone coming and asking you for something like this?
There is a senior rate available in the, in the program.
I just figured if they're already paying for it, then maybe that they could offer that service to someone who couldn't. I just had a constituent say, could I donate these carts that I'm paying for that, you know, so.
Well, one of the things that's, that's resulted in these 832 issues we have is we're trying to manage exceptions. And as you know, you just can't manage exceptions because next year, we're going to have exactly the same problem. Andrew's going to only get 20 stickers for his four properties and it's going to be a problem. We've got to, we've got to get our arms around that or it's going to continue every year. I mean, if you, if you can make, tell Jason what more you have in mind, we're happy to talk about it.
Right.
But maybe I just don't fully understand what you're asking me.
Well, I just, if they're already paying for it and they want to donate their carts to someone that possibly couldn't afford it, like seniors on these fixed incomes, then maybe that would be something that, you know, we could work out, some sort of special program.
We'll look at it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for a point of clarification? So you're saying the sticker thing is really problematic on your end?
Yes.
Okay. So you and Mr. Geddes will put your heads together and come up with some options. And the idea for the stickers, you know, because it's kind of like an extra added, you know, buy one, get a third free or off or something, what was that equated to a certain tonnage or something? Or was it leaf season simply? Or what was it?
No. And I don't mean to be flippant, but in northern, in northern Nevada, it's perceived as a birthright that you get to put as much stuff out of the curb as you want. In southern Nevada, you get to have twice a week garbage service. And anytime there's a change to any of that, folks are just, they're just, they don't understand. And so what that was designed to do was from the perception of, the customer didn't think that they were ever going to have enough space. So they needed more, they always had to have stuff outside their can. We're of the belief, because we've seen it happen everywhere, that if you use the recycling program correctly, you're not going to have that need for stuff outside the container except that those, your leaf seasons, your Christmas time, that sort of thing. And, and, you know, we provided, we provided several options to deal with this excess issue. We've got a discounted rate for an additional container as in the scope of services. We've provided a ticket package that's larger if you have to buy more stick stickers. We provided a time period between, in the fall period where we would just pick up all the leaves that are out there like we used to. But those were options that were not selected by the council.
Okay.
Not the one, that's the one I recommended.
Okay.
I thought that that was the easiest to dissolve it, but that's not the one the council selected.
Well, this is a long-term relationship, right?
Yes.
And, you know, four of us weren't here who have that memory. So if we need, you know, like you said, we have a list.
Oh, sure.
Let's revisit those things.
And it's on Jason's list, trust me.
Okay.
Would you just stop by the house and tell my wife to quit hollering at me when I put something in the wrong bucket? That's all I ask. Anybody got any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
When will you have the, there's one gentleman in particular that's been in regular communication about he deserved the 60 or 80 because of the multiple properties. When will that all be resolved and he only got the 20?
Well, it depends. I mean, I know I got, I got one, I got one email that you had, Sharon, and we sent that customer, we mailed his stuff to him. I don't know if it's the same one, but we did mail him his. We're just trying to deal with them as they come in. So if he's had a phone call and it's one we haven't done, matter of fact, we've got somebody that's on light duty that's actually stuffing envelopes and mailing stickers as we speak. But if you want to just text me his name or something, I'll follow up on it and make sure it gets taken care of.
And then in terms of when the foliage began? And then, in terms of when the foliage begins again, and people are cleaning up their yards, and in particular in the fall, when the leaves fall, I think, to be fair, yeah, there were multiple options. And the reason why we have as many stickers as we do now is because I was the only one at the council level that had concern about the city of trembling leaves and lots of foliage, and that the original proposal that you had just was not going to service our community. Every of the options that you gave us, though, came with a pretty hefty price tag. So it, it was a very simple answer that you gave to my colleague, that, oh, we gave you options. Yeah, you did, but it would have increased the citizens' rates tremendously for those added bags. I forget what it was, but it was a pretty hefty charge.
It was 91 cents.
The council just was not willing to go with.
Right.
So.
Okay, any others? Thank you. One more?
Yep, just really quickly. Where are you at on your community outreach for this program? I know that we required you to do some. I just would like to know how much you've done and where, where we're at now.
Um, well, we're still, we've got that insert that I just showed you that's going out with the billings this month, or in April. And the, we did the advertising that was discussed, the embossment of the labels on the containers in both English and Spanish, several mailers, outdials, those have all been completed. We still have some issues with some of these folks that have not have their containers recovered, that are going to be put on an outdial, so that, because a lot, what's happened in a lot of cases, that they want us to pick a container up, we go by to get it, but it's back behind their fence because they live in an HOA, and they can't have it sitting out. So we've got to coordinate those, those, those pickup times so that we can get that taken care of.
Okay. Roughly, how much money did you allocate for this community?
We spent about $100,000 on the outreach for the program, total program.
All right.
Over the past year.
Okay, I, and then I, I did have an email asking about if you received a special rate on this through the city, on, on your community outreach, through the advertising rate.
The, the city facilitated some, the Spanish communication, I think, that they used their contact, but yes, there were a few that were, that went through the city. But not all of them went through the city. There was three or four items that went through the city's contacts at various places.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Bill Von Poole?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Bill Von Poole, and I'm here today just to say thank you. The last time I appeared before you, I was urging you to, to renegotiate the franchise agreement with Waste Management so that we could get single-stream recycling. Well, you got it done. This is really great. I, you know, with the negotiating skills of Jason Geddes and Greg Martinelli and his staff, it's a reality, and from my perspective, it's working really well. An example, yesterday, very windy day, recycle day in my neighborhood, and I, for the first time, didn't have newspapers blowing all around my yard. You know, they, they were all in a container that had a lid instead of those little bins, so that worked. But I, I really think that the best feature of this whole program is those four prepaid trips to the transfer station every year. It feels like it's free. You know, you can go get rid of your stuff, and it feels like you're doing it for free, and it's, it's been used a lot. I think Mr. Martinelli said that there's been over 800 trips so far to the transfer station under this program. That's huge. And, you know, this isn't a weekend event with long lines. You can go anytime that they're open, and that is a real value. The, the trash that citizens are taking to transfer stations certainly had the potential of winding up as illegally dumped trash in our open space. And those of us who help keep Truckee Meadows beautiful with their cleanups, wow. This, this is a, a real gift, and, and I just want to say it's real progress. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Rick Lake?
Hello, Mayor and Council. My questions were answered. I represent NRS, and I just wanted to know about the ECO Center. So Greg answered them.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right. Now we'll go to the consent agenda, item E. Any items on a poll for discussion?
E3, Mr. Mayor.
E3?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request for discussion, E6, E7, and E9.
E6, 7, and 9. Any others? Motion to approve? All right. Have motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E3. Yes, ma'am.
Fraternal Community Development Director, would you like a summary of what this is? Okay, E3 is an extension of our existing contract with Volunteers of America to keep the overflow, that's over off of Timber Way, open. Typically, we have it for the inclement weather, for the wintertime, to have a place for the, the homeless to go, because the existing Community Assistance Center fills up. And we have the overflow to, to deal with, you know, people not sleeping out in the parks or on the streets. And as we move into the warmer weather, typically at the end of March, we, we discontinue the overflow. And at that point, people that do not stay at the, at the shelter, say if the shelter is full, they have a right to essentially sleep in, in the public areas, such as the sidewalks. And so what we're looking to do is to keep the overflow open so that we have that opportunity or that place for the homeless to, to go to, and so that they're not camping on the sidewalks or other places, public places.
What you have is a federal law that you can't arrest them if you don't have a place to send them. And because we've got the overflow, that does help. Helps our police officers keep them out of the doorways and everything else.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I'm not disputing that. I guess, I guess where my hesitation is, and my desire to have more information, goes back to almost a year ago, when I asked for the formation of a homeless task force, which was to bring stakeholders from the Community Assistance Center, the police, code enforcement, Regional Alliance for Downtown, East 4th Street Merchants, you name it, together to look at everything from an operational standpoint at the Community Assistance Center, to impacts to our tourism and business industry in the downtown core. And that task force has not yet come to fruition for me to vet out some of the questions that I have with, that connect to this. So I guess my question is this, do you happen to have any data on the, on the number of clients at the Community Assistance Center, and where that is, is trending compared to nationally?
We do have some raw numbers for the CAC, the Community Assistance Center, and the overflow, and Elaine Wiseman will be able to, to answer some of those questions. But, but to answer the other question regarding the homeless task force, we are putting that, that scope of work together, which also includes looking at a potential permanent financing program for, for those services, those regional services that, that are occurring right now. And we received that from the Transitional Governing Board, which the mayor of Sparks and Reno and Washoe County Commissioner sits on, and asked us to take a look at the, the overall picture regarding permanent financing, which will really define the level of services that we do provide at the CAC, and also addresses some of the other issues, such as the overflow and the triage center located on site. But with that, do you want to come on up and answer some of that?
Well, I guess my question is, we don't need to spend time today going into some specifics, if I can get some more clarity on when the actual homeless task force is going to convene. Because my thought is, there's no silver bullet, there's no special pill.
Yes.
It's, it's an ongoing, that was my thought with the formation of it, was, this is something, just like the graffiti task force, that would be an ongoing stakeholder input to deal with the balance of, of, you know, not being homeless insensitive, for sure, and meeting the needs of our homeless population, at the same time, meeting the needs of our business and tourism industry. So I, I don't want to spend a bunch of time today, but I'd like to know when we're meeting.
We do have a committee of the City of Sparks, Washoe County, and the City of Reno and staffs that meet and go over some of those things.
This is different. This had, this had different.
Okay.
It had individuals from addiction treatment specialists. It brought together a whole different realm of people.
Right, okay.
And I, my questions probably would have been addressed had that been convened already.
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. That's true. What we found in forming the homeless task force that you originally charged us with is that there are a lot of issues, not surprisingly, tied to homeless that are interconnected. And so we've kind of, we started with a certain direction and realized it was probably going to have to be a little bigger than that. And so what we've looked at, instead of having two homeless task forces with separate, but very connected outcomes that we're looking for, to bring them together, and so we would imagine within the next month, be, bringing forward to you, either for your adoption and creation of that group, well, I'm sorry, this is going to be the manager's homeless task force, either report back to you that we've accomplished it and we're having our meetings, or to explain to you what the impediments might be in terms of being able to get that up and going. So we're going to have something within a month.
Okay, okay, so back to the, the overflow shelter. You know, it was meant to be a cold weather, and now it's, we're going to extend it for three months, and I suspect we'll be sitting here in three months and asking for an extension for another three months. So is that, is, is that what we envisioned from a budgeting standpoint that we're looking at?
Well, part of the reason why we're bringing this forward to you is because we haven't had a chance to really have that broader discussion that you asked for. And rather than close off a piece of the overall equation on how we deal with homeless by simply letting the overflow shelter lapse, we're suggesting to you, let's keep that in play until we can come back to you with some suggestions on how to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You know, I share some of the concern, I think, if directions given, and, you know, other items don't come in, you know, you have the marching orders, let's go on those. And I, I think also, when we decided to disband the NAPS, we committed to having processes that, at least I felt we did, that would be issue, and, and really work through some of these difficult issues. And so I've been looking forward to getting on, on that process. Now, my specific questions about this contract are, there's a discussion in the staff report that this is about $73,000 that's coming out of existing general fund revenues. And when we talked at budget time about our commitment to homeless needs, we came to the finding that we could not afford to staff the triage. But now we came in interim and staffed the homeless shelter, the overflow, and we're going to extend it. So where is this money coming from? Is this CDBG money, or?
Yes, thank you. Elaine Wiseman, Community Development Department. Actually, this, this money isn't coming out of the general fund, it's out of the existing Community Assistance Center budget. We have some CDBG that's going into it, as well as some, some VA money, which is a flexible pot of money that we get that, you know, helps veterans stay in the shelter, and it can be used for any type of shelter operations. And so this is just leftover money from, from the current fiscal year that we were able to scrape together to fund these last, these additional three months to get us through to the end of the year, until we can really explore something more permanent through the homeless task force.
I thought that we were already maxed out on our CDBG for what is the category, public assistance? So are we, have we gone back to HUD, or are we extending the numbers? Because it's, maybe as an entitlement community, we get 15%. Are we within that 15%?
We are, and from what I understand, we have just moved some money around, where there, we may not have used some for, you know, certain operations. We've moved it to allow for this.
Okay. I mean, I think, I think that, because we did have this discussion at budget time that we were maxed out, and so if we're, if we're within limit guidelines, that's fine, I understand that. Now, this law that I've heard a lot about, I've never heard, you know, a citation, I wonder if it's case law, but, about the law enforcement officers, if we have the overflow, then can be more proactive in a humane way, but from people sleeping. And as Riverside Drive, I see really kind of get more activity, business investment. I see a lot of the sleeping going on there, and a lot of the trash generation. So I'm curious, from the law enforcement side, what is the patrol process then? If we're making this commitment to the overflow, what is the patrol process to tell people who are sleeping, hey, it's wa, time to wake up, gather up your stuff and, and move along? Because I, I don't see a lot of that kind of activity when I go walking in the mornings on the weekends.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Tom Robinson on behalf of the women and women of Reno Police Department. To answer your question, when overflow is open, it gives law enforcement the opportunity to get people off the street. Our goal ultimately is to get them into, to resources and get them serviced, and to get them some things they might need that they're not dealing with when they're out on the street sleeping. When we don't have overflow, and the CAC is full, they're allowed to sleep wherever they can sleep, because of some of the federal precedent case law that we've already discussed. So overflow helps us in our efforts. And our efforts aren't necessarily to take them to jail, or to, to do any kind of enforcement activity. Our efforts really are focused around voluntary compliance, getting them services and getting them back into society.
Your focus just on the 4th Street corridor, is it along the River Quarter? And, and one reason I'm bringing this up is, someone told me this week that there's precedent for years where we have low flows in the Truckees, for a lot of, you know, people to be able to cross over and camp in areas that they don't normally camp, and the camp proliferation could be quite significant this summer. And that brings trash, threat of fires, et cetera.
That's a good point. Our efforts aren't just focused on the 4th Street corridor or downtown. We do patrol along the river paths, and you're right, we see a significant number of camps established along the river. And I didn't even think about it, but you're right, with the water level being low, that could provide a bigger area for them to set up camp. But, so we do, we do work the rivers, we have, we do it as a normal course of our daily activity. And then we also do operations where we'll send a team down as a planned event to make contact with them and get them connected with the CAC, or to get them connected with resources.
Okay, well, I mean, if this helps that other effort, you know, those funds for you to do it, you know, in a humane way, to help us, you know, people feel safer walking along, and, and also the trash, then, you know, I think we should go for it for a few more months.
Motion? Second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E6. Ms. Brackus?
Mayor, E6 is a rather large contract with the, for sewer lift station replacement project. And we've had a lot before this table on the collection systems, you know, the different sewer projects, and we've talked about the plan, but I haven't seen too much on the lift stations. And it seems like, how many lift stations are you doing with this?
For the record, Dustin Waters with Public Works, on this project, we're working on four lift station rehabs, rehabilitation of four lift stations, but also improving the SCADA system for up to 30 lift stations.
The, oh, okay, so the pressure, we're working, or, no, is it pressure?
Well, the communication between the lift stations.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because when I look to the CIP, which is where I want to look to understand what our infrastructure requirements are, are all the lift stations on there? Is there an inventory of, you know, how much we can expect to see being spent each year on lift stations, and how much on pipe? Have you, I mean, is this on the CIP?
For the record, John Flansburgh, Public Works. Yes, these projects are on our current five-year capital improvement program. It is part of the collection system.
Okay.
Which was part of the presentation we gave last council session. And as far as an inventory, yes, we have an inventory for all lift stations and certain items that will come up, but these were the four that we felt were most critical, and we decided to package them together and do basically one project out for design, and we decided to package them together and do basically one project out for design and then one project, potentially one project, we may have two for the actual construction.
So, next year, we'll just keep seeing lift stations come up because we have a?
You know, there's four now. It might be three or four years before we see another.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I'll motion.
Cares unanimously. Item E7.
Mr. Mayor, this is an unusual one for me because I don't recall us seeing kind of a reimbursement arrangement with the RTC before. It looks like, is this something we've done ongoing? It looks like they're reimbursing us for participating in one of their projects. Can we get other reimbursements when we sit on the technical, technical committee and, you know, plan roads? Is, is this unique?
Steve Binnell, City Reno Traffic Engineer, Public Works. It is a little unique in that in the past, we've gone, RTC's gone out to consultant for the retiming, but we've had some issues with just the expertise and the product that we're getting. Now, we're going to be doing these all in-house with RTC staff, City Reno staff, Spark staff, so, and it's going to be federally funded through CMAC, and we can get reimbursed for that.
Okay, so, the RTC's paying us for this because we are the signal experts. How's this going to impact your existing workload then?
Yes.
Because a hundred thou, I mean, is that going to take a quarter engineer for a year?
Yeah, we don't know exactly how much time it's going to take us. This is the first time we've done it before, but we're just estimating. And it will be a burden on, on staff time, but we think we can, we can fit it in and get this work done.
Might we see some temporary hiring or some other effort if we need to backfill?
Yeah, we can possibly do that, but also, we're going to be utilizing, we're working with UNR, too, and their engineering.
Okay.
Dr. Ken up there, and some of his staff are going to be also helping us with it.
Okay.
So, it's just going to be a collaborative effort with everybody. We, we really don't know. It's the first time we've done it.
Okay, because, you know, a week doesn't go by where I hear Public Works, how stretched you guys are, even in the signal division, and, you know, I'm just wondering.
It's going to be, we're going to be stretched then, but I, I think we can, we can do it.
Well, I'll motion.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E9.
E9 is, and I have a little bit of a question about this in terms of how this is working. This is the workers' comp fund, and this is like an, an expertise that we bring to help us with our workers' comp program. Can you explain it a little bit?
Yes, Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources, for the record. Councilmember Brackus, yes. This group is a managed care organization, and they are assisting the city in managing the medical management side of workers' compensation, injuries, and illnesses.
Okay, and we already have a contract with them?
Yes, we do.
We're just upping that?
Yes, it's an extension.
Okay, and the amount that we're upping at, is it coming out of the workman's comp budget, or is it coming out of the police budget?
It's coming out of the workers' comp fund.
In the past, has it come out of the police budget?
No. The only things that come out of the department budgets that relates to workers' comp are time off issues and certain provider, medical provider costs that are charged to that at the end of each budget year.
Okay, okay. Because it says, it says prior to entering the contract, the annual fee for the risk assessment had been $20,000 from the general fund, but that hadn't been in any department budget?
Actually, that is just an additional program.
An additional program?
Yes.
Okay.
And what the city was doing then is that every year, police and fire are required to have an annual physical under NRS. And when the results of those physicals are sent to the employees, they are able to go to the clinic, specialty health, if they want to. It's totally voluntary for assistance and evaluation on how to work on something that came up in the physical.
And prior to that, it's been in the department budget, and now it's shifting to the general fund workman's comp budget, is that what's going on?
No, that piece is still going to come from the department budget, whether it's police or fire.
Okay, okay, that was my question. Because I, I'm trying to get to the point of, you know, if we're, have departments that have been built and their budget's programmed on certain services, and now those are going to another fund item, how are we going to look at that from a?
Okay.
A budget line? Okay, I'll motion.
Thank you.
And I'll second, but could you, Renee, give us kind of a recap? This, this took us quite some time to, to get underway, and there's significant savings that we're experiencing because of it. Do you, do you have top of mind what we've probably saved by having done this?
Councilmember Zadra, I don't have the exact savings at this time, but the things that we're working on with the clinic, in conjunction with the clinic, the medical director and the staff, as well as a third-party administrator and the department representatives from the city, are meeting regularly to help manage the claims. We're really working on time off issues, which I think is where the biggest savings is going to occur. And, you know, it's long been established that the sooner an employee gets back to work, gets well and gets back to work, you know, the more productive and the better off that that person is, you know, in the long run, in a physical and mental capacity.
Thank you.
I'll, thank you, councilmember, because I went to one of the talks by these specialty health people, and it's just cutting edge. It's great to see the department, and it was a police department function, really be proactive in health issues. It was, I learned so much. It was, it was great. So, I'm, I'm very encouraged that we have that on board. I was just wondering about the budget.
They've saved us a lot of money. They've saved us a lot of money. All right. Did you get, we, we did a vote, didn't we? We did not vote, okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Go to item F1, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
Okay.
Which is bill number 6893. It's an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18 Annexation of Land Development in order to apply regionally consistent development standards for school facilities by adding certain language to and removing certain language from Chapter 1806 Administration and Procedures, Section 18.06.405, entitled Special Use Permit, Section 18.06.407, entitled Site Plan Review, Chapter 18.08, Zoning, Article II, Permitted Uses and Regulations, Table 18.08-4, entitled Uses permitted in residential-based zoning districts, Table 18.08-5, entitled Uses permitted in non-residential-based zoning districts, Table 18.08-6A and B, entitled Uses permitted in regional centers-based zoning districts, Table 18.08-7, entitled Uses permitted in TOD-based zoning districts, Section 18.08-202E8, entitled School, Primary, Public or Private, Section 18.08-202E9, entitled School Secondary, Public or Private, Section 18.08-202E10, entitled School Non-Traditional Secondary, Public or Private, Article 4 District-Specific Standards, Overlay Zoning Districts, Section 18.08-302, entitled Special Purpose-Based Zoning Districts, Section 18.08-406E2B, entitled Southeast Neighborhood Plan Area Overlay District Land Uses, Chapter 18.12, General Development and Design Standards, Article 11, Off-Street Parking and Loading, Table 18.12-8, entitled Off-Street Parking Requirement Table, and 18.2-11, entitled Bicycle Parking Regulations, together with other matters probably relating thereto.
Motion, second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of legal? Anybody paying attention over here? I have a question for you. So, if somebody submits, let's say, a, a letter into record, let's say for the special assessment district we have today, and they're either in opposition or support, that letter as written can be submitted into record, correct? It doesn't have to be verbally read into the record?
Yeah, for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. Yes, and it can be at a couple ways. They can either submit it to the clerk directly, or they can submit it to the council member, and the council member can direct that it be writ to the minutes, and there's actually a provision for that, too, so.
Okay, but it can be submitted in written form solely?
Correct.
Okay, why can't we do that with these ordinances?
Can't, so, forgive me, so?
Well, because they're so long, and they're, you know, we've got them here that are half a page long, can't they just be in written form, say, submitted for record and not to have to have legal reread them?
Oh, to, um, let me take a look at that and get back to you on that. I don't have an answer. This has been a practice, I think, since the dawn of time, and I'm sure there's a reason for it, but I don't know off the top of my head what it is, so.
Okay.
But I will get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll go to item F2. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, and we did receive four letters of protest, all of which council has received.
Okay. I have people who want to speak and some that don't. Mr. Galloway does not wish to speak, but he's in favor. Please support. Mr. Partlow is speaking for 217 homeowners of the Platteo, and he does not wish to speak, but he's in support. Clark Kaler does not wish to speak, and he's in support. We have people that want to speak in opposition. Mark Rossoni.
My name is Mark Rossoni. My family has property in the 700 block of West Fifth Street, and I spoke in opposition to the expanded SAD two weeks ago. I respectfully request that the council, in considering this ordinance, ensure that the level of police protection in all the outlying areas, far from the downtown corridor, include the volunteer foot patrol, as the city promised it would in its letter of January 24th, 2014. After all, this is what the city is specifically asking the property owners in the yellow zone to fund with the special assessment. If the city cannot keep its promise, then I ask that all of Zone 1 on the police map, which has not seen a statistically significant increase in police calls in an 18-year period of expanding population, to be excluded from the new SAD. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Merle Snyder does not wish to speak, and he thinks, he has two parcels with nothing on them, they're vacant land. He thinks they should be excluded. Fred Atchison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Fred Atchison, and I own property in the area, and I've submitted, to speed things up, I've submitted a statement and a map appended thereto, to each council person, and I don't know if you have them or not. So, I'll just whip through this. The memorandum that I have prepared involves the proposed inclusion of a discrete area north of Interstate 80 from Sierra Street to Evans Avenue and from Eighth Street to Ninth Street, and I dub it the UNR corridor. The first point, the map created for the new borders of the district was prepared by an ad hoc committee made up of unknown persons. None of the individuals involved in the preparation of the new map had any vested interest in the UNR corridor. No private property owner within the UNR corridor or the University of Nevada participated in the preparation of the map creating this new assessment district, and no property owners in the UNR corridor were members of the ad hoc committee. Point two, the only notice regarding existence of the new map, to me, and I assume to others, was received in general mail in January slash February of 2014, and this was the first notice regarding a proposed new district which included my property. That applies to the others as well, that I, with whom I have spoken. Three, the UNR corridor consists of four city blocks running from the curb on the west side of Sierra Street and does not include any parcels on the west side of Sierra Street to the curb of the east side of Evans Avenue, which does not include any parcels on the east side of Evans Avenue. There are 44 parcels total in this area. I have pieced together an example that's attached to this, and the X's marked on the example are important. There have been no favorable responses to the newly created UNR corridor from property owners in the corridor that have been made part of this new district. There have been objections from property owners in the UNR corridor, and you can see that map. Each block in the UNR corridor is distinct. For instance, the block from Evans Avenue to Lake Street is primarily Evans Park with a single parcel enclave used by the SAE fraternity house. None of the property on the Evans Park block is assessed. The block from Lake Street to Center Street has 16 parcels, and 10 are either owned by or for the benefit of the University of Nevada, and all are residential. Those owned by the university are not assessed. Within this block are three private parcels owned by the Kahlers, father and son, who are also opposed to inclusion. No property owners on this block are known to support inclusion. The block from North Center Street to Virginia Street has 13 parcels, eight are in the residential area east of the alley, splitting the block, and five are in, may I continue?
If you're about to wrap up, but if you've got a long way to go, we're not.
And the commercial corridor, oh, and also, that was misspoken, Mr. Kahler is present, and he was not in favor. At the start of this, you indicated that Mr. Kahler was in favor of inclusion, he was On the residential east half of the block, four parcels are owned by the university, and four are privately owned, with three of the four being residential, and the Jimmy John Sandwich Shop building owned by the, is owned by the Knights of Columbus. It may not be assessed, I don't know, because of its nonprofit status. I am opposed to inclusion, and no known owners on this block favor inclusion. The block from Virginia Street to Sierra Street has 13 parcels, and no parties on this block have favored inclusion in the new district. The properties owned or controlled by the university are serviced by the university police department. The entire UNR corridor is within the university master plan. No property owners in the UNR corridor are known to favor inclusion in the new district. According to city personnel, there are 84 property owners in the newly proposed district in favor of inclusion. All are well south of the Interstate 80 freeway. Thirty of the 84 are condominium owners in Park Towers and Arlington Towers. Park Towers and Arlington Towers are about one mile from the UNR corridor.
Okay, you're going to need to wrap it up. You need to wrap it up.
I will, sir. In a heavily commercial area on the river, there are no residential parcel owners in the proposed new district signifying support for the new district. I submit that inclusion is in violation of NRS 268-272, which requires a finding as a condition precedent that the public interest will benefit by the provision of a higher level of police protection within that part of the area. I also believe that it allows 268-284 specifically allows for any specified territory to be excluded from the proposed district. The residents and owner citizens within the UNR corridor move for exclusion from the area for the reasons above mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If I misspoke, Mr. Kahler, I apologize. He is in opposition. Kukit? You wish to speak?
Aye, sure.
Well, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for your time. I gave a handout to our, to Lynette Jones to hand you there, and rather than me sit and read that to you, I just want to go over a few other, few other points that maybe I didn't have added in there. I'm on the same page with Fred Atchison here. I have property up there north of I-80. Couple things. First of all, you get a letter in the mail, City of Reno, and sometimes it's happy, sometimes it's sad. This one was sad because you're asking for money, taxes. So, there's never really a good time to ask anybody for taxes or, or money to pay for more taxes. This isn't a good time also. As I looked at the map and the proposed area, you basically, it was proposed as doubling the size of the downtown SAD existing district. Now, with not adding any police officers, maybe a volunteer program, okay, it just, if you double the size of an area, I, I think you need more bodies there to, to sufficiently police it. And they were asking, asked for $190,000, you know, for a volunteer service or something like that, but volunteers, as far as I always understood, when I volunteer for something, it's free. the size of the downtown SAD existing district. Now, with not adding any police officers, maybe a volunteer program, okay, it's just, if you double the size of an area, I think you need more bodies there to sufficiently police it. And they were asking to ask for $190,000, you know, for a volunteer service or something like that, but volunteers, as far as I always understood, when I volunteer for something, it's free. I'm here to ask you to help alleviate some of the expansion you have, and one of my solutions is take, you know, north of I-80 and knock that out of the proposal, because there is plenty of UNR police. They constantly are up there. They patrol that... You go stand on Ninth Street and watch them, and it's a loop that they just constantly You know, the police, in my opinion, are overworked and underpaid as it is. You want to expand their area double size, and it's just more of a burden to the existing 14 officers. One other thing I have here is reading that, a little bit of that NRS Chapter 268. This was to create, to create a special assessment district. Well, there was one already created. You guys, it's just a little bit different. You're asking to expand something that's already been created, so I don't know where that kind of comes into play, if that makes any sense. That's about all I have to say.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
In conclusion, I want to thank you, Honorable Mayor Bob Kachel, for everything you've done for the city of Reno, and appreciate it, and please take this as a compliment. You will be a hard act to follow.
Thank you very much, sir. Brenda Nance?
Hi, I spoke a couple of weeks ago on this problem of having the extra 14 police come in, and maybe I'm barking up the wrong tree or something like that, but I don't think it's the homeless that are causing the problems. I think what's causing the problems is these rental places that are renting to anybody to just get the money in. And so I got to thinking, and the reason I'm thinking this is I'm a responsible owner, and I have low-income renters, but I'm really careful, and I have a lot of rules, and we don't have a lot of problems. And I've got Lake Mill Lodge, which is two doors down. The police are down there at least three to four times a week. So I got to thinking, why should I have to pay this extra tax when I'm responsible? And I don't know if this is a possibility, but why not have... A person can have so many calls a year, then after that, the property owner has to pay fines for having the police there every single time, because they're renting to druggies. Mill Plague Lodge has about 108 rooms. They have 36 pit bulls in that building. Why do they have pit bulls? Because they've got druggies. They know nobody will come into their room if there's a pit bull in there, and so they have pit bulls. So they have pit bulls in a building where they just walk up and down the streets, and they just do their business, and they don't even clean up after these dogs. But what I'm saying is, is that the problem is, the criminals are not your homeless. I don't think that's where the problem is. They usually keep to themselves, from what I can understand. It's these people that are drug dealing, that are prostituting. They come all the time to my place, and they want to pay for one week. And well, you can tell by the way they're dressed that they're prostituting. Well, we don't rent to those. We have to go with empties, but I don't just take anybody. You go down to Mill Plague Lodge, if they have cash in their hand, they rent to them. And so you can't tell them who they can and can't rent to, but I sure think that they should be fined when they have got the police coming down there with a fire truck all the time with, you know, for... And I'll tell you another thing. You might say, well, then the property owner wouldn't call the police if there was a problem. But that's not who's calling the police. It's the other tenants that are calling the police. And so they still would call the police. But if they started to regulate who they had in there, it might stop some of this crime we've got. Maybe the criminals will go to a city where they will rent to them for nothing, or something like that. But the other thing... Oh, I lost my train of thought. But, doggone it, it was a good one, too. I thought, I thought. But I can't remember it now. So, but anyway, I was just thinking, there's got to be another way to do this than to hire 14 more police, because a guy at my place got stabbed in the neck. Now, it was a derelict that was high on drugs, and it was just coming down the street, ran at him, and hit him into the neck. Now, if a policeman was there, they would have stopped it, but the guy wouldn't have stabbed him in the neck if there was a policeman there. So I don't think a lot of the crime will be deterred by having extra police, because they're not going to do their crime when the police is there. They're going to wait till they go down the street a little bit, then they'll do their drug dealing, then they'll do their prostituting or whatever. So I think it's to clean up or fine those people that are not being responsible, property owners, that should have to pay this extra tax, not me, who is doing everything I can to be a good citizen.
Thank you very much. Thank you. No other public comment? I'll bring it back to the table for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do want to say, I did go on an extensive ride-along about a year ago, and I will say with Mrs. Nance's comment, I don't know where you went. Oh, there you are. Hi. I agree with you in the sense that there are a lot of business owners with these motels, apartments, what have you, that we are getting constant calls to come down there. And I strongly believe that we also have to start looking at these businesses that have these continuous calls. I could not believe how many times we were at Lake Mill Lodge in one night, and I believe that those business owners are the ones that should have to pay for that and not the citizens. So when you are a repeat offender like that, I think it's something that we need to pay close attention to and look at, you know, what solutions we can do, or maybe they are fined, or, you know, if there are so many calls. But I agree with you. I think it's a practice that, you know, why should all the other residents have to pay for it?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, may I comment? And I said it the last time when we talked about this, and I called it the repeat offender property. And was there a way in which we could somehow formulate a carrot and a stick kind of thing relative to these properties that continually utilize our police resources to an extent that is out of range with the norm? And I think we talked about business licensing, that we didn't think there was a legal avenue, maybe necessarily through that, but I agree that I think there, maybe there's an opportunity to look at a better way to penalize or fine these repeat offender properties.
And Chief, if you could include in that, you know, observation that you'll be giving us, we've had this conversation a little bit in the past, and specifically, the ones that are coming to my memory are the Second Street. We had some properties that just had huge calls for service on Second Street, and just offensive. But we were told that, you know, that activity was not happening in my doors. Someone may have left my property or the property next door to me, and someone just happened to call it in and used my address because it was closest to my front door. So if that was the reason why we kind of let go of trying to explore a way to look at the repeat offenders, is there an opportunity for more thought to still get us there without really violating the good operator?
Yes, ma'am. Honorable Mayor and Council Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department, to deal with both of those questions from Mrs. Giordano and Mrs. Adra, first of all, the recommendation, I briefly discussed it at the last council meeting, with direction from Andrew Klinger, was to develop comprehensive strategies with Mr. Alex Woodley, and one of those, which we're moving forward with, is to run monthly community safety and service team operations in that quarter. And that, those monthly operations would be driven by data that we collect on calls for service at locations or spheres of influence where we have calls for service in a sphere of influence around a geographical area. That seems to work the best for us. And so that, initially, we would go out, ma'am, and contact those businesses. I mean, we had Mrs. Lob, that we just gave the first Crime Free Multi-Housing Award to about a month ago downtown. We want to do more of those things with the community safety and service team, which Andrew has driven us to definitely do that. Bill Thomas is the lead on that team, and Alex is working with us. And then on the other, that sphere of influence around the quarter, that was with the DAC discussion we had, ma'am. If you remember, the DAC did a good job. We've knocked a lot of those, knock on wood, no pun intended, those calls down in those bars downtown and some of the crime associated with it. But what Ms. Adra was trying to explain, for those that may not be familiar with that discussion a couple of years ago, was that the bar owners would say, basically it was the bar owners, would say, hey, look, this is going on out in the street, in the alley, in the public sidewalk. It's not definitely inside my business, so I have a legal right to not be held responsible for it. Mr. Iozzi actually directed us to take a look at that from council direction. Mr. Iozzi led that on a legal piece to charge for calls for service, and my recollection is, is that legal said it's not something we can do. And so we worked with the DAC to kind of deal with those issues in the sphere of influence instead of trying to charge businesses for calls for service. But long-winded answer, but the bottom line is, is this CSAT team will make a big difference. We already have motel intervention. This would be more comprehensive, and if we're running monthly operations based on data, calls for service, complaints, like this young lady's complaint over here, I think we'll start to change the behavior downtown of business owners. Rob?
Thank you.
Rob Boney, City Attorney's Office. And Chief Pitts is correct that we do not have the legal authority to charge people for calls for service. The legislature has not granted that authority to local government jurisdictions, and so we do not have the ability to charge calls for service.
But we do have a... Don't we? Because if they're a nuisance, don't we have the right to jerk their business license?
Well, that's actually, though, Mr. Mayor, probably a different topic, but if somebody...
That's a different story.
We can't bill someone for calling the police or calling the fire department.
Rob, tell me, help me distinguish that we can't bill people for their service when we now are charging for house alarm or even business alarms.
Those would be powers that the legislature has granted to us, and in this particular instance, we've researched the matter for the fire department in charging for, you know, showing up to your house for a medic call or things like that, fire call, and we don't have the legal ability to implement those bills because the legislature hasn't given us that authority. That is a, and I got to get this right, a Dillon's rule state, we're not a home rule state, and I think that's always been the push, have us classified, have our state adopt the home rule state. So in this particular instance, charging for the police to show up, calls for service, we don't have the ability to do that, the legal ability to do that. It's basically cost recovery, and we can, in certain instances where the legislature has said we can, in this instance, we haven't been given that authority.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think Ms. Nance brings up some good opportunities, the nuisance point that you just made, and, you know, bringing downtown to where we want it to be is a multi-pronged approach, and it's complex, but we're here to talk about what we're doing with these additional taxes that we are requiring people to pay for. And since we last had our meeting, the Downtown Police Maintenance District Committee met, and I'm the liaison, with continued discussion, looking at the ordinance, the legislation as it exists, and I think Mr. Atchison brings up some points about legal defensibility of our actions, and the ordinance says that we need to be on record of what the existing levels of service are. And Deputy Chief Robinson last time said, well, it's the patrols, the regular patrols. I think we need to have at least a memo or an understanding of what the patrols mean. It's part of Patrol District X, and at current times, you know, under this budget year, at any given time, you know, it's within a two-mile scope of a patrol officer, who, you know, we know patrol and traffic are merged. And if I may continue, the extra 14 officers, at this point, I understand, are on bicycle, and that's what's going on. So that gobbles up all the rest of the money. There's discussion about whether or not they're going to buy these motorcycles, go segways. I think some of us talked about patrol, foot patrols. All of that, I think, needs to be somewhere documented, and these monthly CSAT teams, a monthly CSAT team costs this much of the money. We really need to have, accepted by this council, I think, to be defensible, you know, a little more data. And we can do it, I think we can go forward today, but we do need to really target to people, to show them what exactly they're getting on these assessments.
Okay.
Quickly, quickly.
Yes.
So I would just ask that this body to remember possibly a BDR when it comes time to choosing one.
Okay. Mr. George, showing to give me a motion?
Do we need a motion to accept the report, or do we go into the ordinance?
Councilmember George, that would be appropriate, to accept the report, and then you could move into the initial or the ordinance introduction.
Okay, so I'll move to accept the report.
Well, I'd like to suggest that we give additional direction to staff to bring back a more detailed statement of what existing patrol levels are per the ordinance, and what are the nature of the enhancements, the additional extra service that is going in the district. And to some degree, I know operations are somewhat, you know, sensitive, but, you know, what exactly, how the levels of operations are being...
Let me get a... I have a motion. Do I have a second on the motion? I have a second. We've heard discussion. Any other discussion?
My, I want to be clear, that my...
Make yourself clear.
My direction is that this would come back. So is that included in your motion? That we will get additional information from staff to return with us with that report as I stated?
I would actually rather have them just come update us, maybe in six months, on operations that they've done and things that they've done within the district, just kind of, because you might make changes to it, I would assume. If you start a process now, and there's something that you see that you might want to amend or change, or, I mean, there might be, as you would in any operation, make tweaks to it. I mean, I would rather have reports back as to what you've done, not so much what you're going to do. I mean, does that make sense, Chief?
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council Steve Pitts, again, but I agree with Mrs. Brekis's recommendations, and I think if we did something quarterly, it was quick. You agreed with the benchmarks. We can develop those over the next month to include other services in other city departments, and that way we can come in collectively, Mr. George, and kind of answer those questions, because the benchmarks have been created. I mean, as Mrs. Brekis said, what's going on with CSAT? How much is that costing? We've projected those costs to Bill Thomas. He already has that information from RPD, and then the cost-benefit analysis on that. And so I think if we came in, I'm perfectly willing to do that. That's good.
So what kind of direction do you need in the motion? Anything additional?
It would be tough for you to define the benchmarks today. I think that, kind of in the direction Mrs. Brekis was going, I feel comfortable tackling that and working with Alex and other people in other city departments to make sure we can come in, Mr. Mayor, and maybe in five minutes, answer those, if that's where you were going, ma'am.
Within 60 days, if you could come back and describe what the existing levels of service are, what the enhancements are, and how those will be benchmarked, and with dollar amounts, this much in foot patrol, this much in CSAT.
We can do that, ma'am.
CSAT anticipated at once a...
So then I would include that in the motion.
Okay, good for the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F2?
F22, which is Bill Number 6894, Ordinance Amendment Reno Municipal Code Title II, Administration, Chapter 2.06, Department, Section 2.06.080, entitled Boundaries, and Section 2.06.090, entitled Special Assessments, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Have motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to item G, ordinance adoption.
This is ordinance number 6323. Ordinance demand Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Zoning 2. One, change zoning designations from HC Hotel Casino on 29.65 acres, CC Community Commercial on 35.91 acres, and TC Washoe County's Tourist Commercial on 12.27 acres, to MUWGRC Mixed Use Western Gateway Regional Center Overlay from GR Washoe County's General Rural to OS Open Space on 10 acres, from PSF Washoe County's Public and Semi-Public Facilities to PF Public Facility on 47.78 acres, from GR Washoe County's General Rural to PF Public Facility on .55 acres, from GC Washoe County's General Commercial to CC Community Commercial on 16.49 acres, from I Washoe County's Industrial to CC Community Commercial on 5.79 acres, from I Industrial to CC Community Commercial on 12.46 acres, from UT 40 Unincorporated Transition 40 acres to LLR 1 Large Lot Residential 1 acre on 2.63 acres, from GR Washoe County's General Rural to LLR 1 Large Lot Residential 1 acre on 7.66 acres, from MDFs Washoe County's Medium Density Suburban to SF 15 Single Family Residential, 15,000 square feet on 3.46 acres, and from GR Washoe County's General Rural to LLR .5 Large Lot Residential .5 acres on 5.91 acres in the area formerly identified as the West Forest Street Transit Oriented Development Corridor, Western Gateway Plan Area, and two, change zoning designations from MUNVTC Mixed Use North Virginia Transit Corridor Overlay to AC Arterial Commercial on 34.25 acres, CC Community Commercial on .35 acres, I Industrial on 22.81... on 22.81 acres, IB Industrial Business on 8.1 acres, ICE Industrial Commercial on 31.82 acres, MF14 Multi-Family 14 Units per Acre on 128.77 acres, MF21 Multi-Family 21 Units per Acre on 1.5 acres, MF30 Multi-Family 30 Units per Acre on 193.67 acres, and PF Public Facility on 171.81 acres, in certain areas formerly identified as the North Virginia Street Transit Oriented Development Corridor Plan, and three, to change the zoning designation from SF6 Single Family Residential 6,000 square feet to MUNVTC Mixed Use North Virginia Transit Corridor Overlay on 64.5 acres, parcel located 1,280 feet northwest of the intersection of North Virginia Street and Lemon Drive, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, following up on Councilmember Jarrodon's question, we went and we looked at the Charter. Section 2.1 does require the reading into the record at both the first reading and the second reading, so.
Move to that.
Have motion, it's second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, the title. Yeah, that whole thing is the title.
Is the whole ordinance considered a title? But it's not, it's a matter of practice on how those titles are written.
Yeah, and we can go back and look at that. Yeah, certainly.
Okay, now we go to item H, Resolutions.
Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution Number 7953, Resolution Accepting Streets, Golden Hills Phase 2B, LDC 06-00355, Portions of Tobiano Drive, Trail Rider Drive, and Trail Rider Court.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H2.
This is Resolution Number 7954, Resolution Accepting Streets, Gateway Company LC and Housing Resources LC, subparen PAR 13-0004, and paren, a portion of Arrow Creek Parkway.
Have motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H3.
This is Resolution 7955, Resolution Fixing the Time When Objections to the Assessment Role for the City of Reno, Nevada, 2013 Special Assessment District Number One, In and For the City of Reno, made by the City Council of Said City, together with the Public Works Director and City Engineer, will be heard and causing such role to be filed in the office of the City Clerk.
Motion. Have motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance Introduction, item I1. What? Wait a minute, I have somebody wishes to speak. Linda Mountain?
Hi. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be able to be here and to speak. This is my first time in the building. I've only been a Reno resident for three weeks, transplant from Florida, and I find your city to be very beautiful and friendly. I love it here.
Thank you.
And I'm an artist. I'm sorry.
I said welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm an artist. I've been a professional artist for nearly 40 years. I worked at Universal, Disney, and many small companies, primarily in California and Florida. In 2008, my life was impacted in a very bizarre and adverse way. I'm now disabled and due to a rare brain disorder. So, I have to live in a whole different way. While walking through the park the other day, there was a musician playing guitar. He was very good, and he was doing sort of flamenco type stuff and, excuse me, his case was open, and he had a few dollars in the case, and it struck me that, okay, maybe Reno is open to this sort of thing. And I walked around some more, but then there was a sign that said, anyone who sells or, you know, distributes anything for sale is subject to arrest unless they have a permit. So, I figured, well, of course, Linda, you know. So, then, I was on the internet the other day, and Craigslist had a posting about the meeting today, artists to speak in favor of just exhibiting their work. I was assuming it was just in the downtown area, in the park area perhaps. I was hoping it wasn't just some bogus thing that was posted. So, I'm just here to say I, I don't know how much deliberation has been done, you know, insofar as discussing this, or, but I'm very much in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome down. Steve White.
Take a picture.
Steve, you sat there quiet all day. What's wrong with you? No, Steve, come on.
Mayor, I present your staff. I, I didn't abuse them too bad.
That's good.
You know, some thanks are in order. First off, Ms. Breckus, thank you for reaching out to me and emailing me, corresponding with me, and developing a conversation. Mr. Delgado, thank you for meeting with me. Especially, Councilwoman Shively, thank you for facilitating these meetings. You came over and you met with me at the radio station when I was doing the PSAs, and that opened this relationship and this dialogue. And you also are the one that facilitated the meetings with the council members, and you had a driving force in facilitating the meeting with me and the staff. And we all sat down in that meeting, and we all hit it off. And Hillary got there a little bit late, just tried to stir things up a little bit, but we, we all got along great, and we all walked out of that room kind of singing kumbaya or something, you know. But, but we've given you a great set of codes, you know, and it's, it's groundbreaking. It's something wonderful that you're giving to your community. And Mr. Mayor, God bless you, sir, because of your help as well in forcing this all to move forward and everything, what a wonderful legacy you're leaving to all your children in this community. Now, what we need to do is, in moving forward, we need to make this, you know, we need to nurture it, we need to guide its course, and we need to make this family-oriented, you know? We wrote the codes to be very narrowly tailored to address specifically the fine arts. Now, we need to start thinking about, how can we get families and children involved in participating in the fine arts in our community? How can we develop art in the park? We've got all these sports programs. How can we start focusing a little more on art in the park for all of our kids? That's what I've been fighting for all these years. You know, this whole thing, it's important for you all to understand something. This whole thing of me starting as an artist advocate started with me creating the very first community art show on the shores of Clement Park in Littleton, Colorado. Clement Park is attached to Columbine. I was there that morning of the shooting. These art shows that I'm talking about, this whole thing started with those children from Columbine. And I'm nothing but a messenger, and the message is to deliver the gift of art back to our children. And I want you all to understand that this gift that you've now, you're going to give to your children, is coming directly from those children that suffered the horror of the massacre of Columbine. It's coming directly from them. And isn't it a wonderful thing? The beauty, the beauty that's going to come to the world as a result of this, that terrible horror that took place those many years ago, something finally is going to come beautiful from that. And it's a wonderful thing. So, I hope you all unanimously vote to pass these codes. We've worked long and hard. It's been a 12-year struggle. Thank you, Mayor. God bless you all. Thank you.
[applause]
Do you have another kind of motion?
I have one. Can you read it?
I want to ask the second question.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item 112.
This is Bill Number 6895, Ordinance to amend Title IV of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Business License Code by amending Chapter 4.04 thereof, which is untitled by entitling the chapter general provisions and by amending section 4.04.020 to exempt sales of First Amendment-protected expressive merchandise from the business license requirement and providing other matters property relating thereto.
Do you have a second motion? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item 113, I13.
This is Bill Number 6896, Ordinance to amend Title V of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Privileged License Permits and Franchises by amending Chapter 5.14, entitled First Amendment Artisans and Sidewalk Speakers by changing the name of the chapter to First Amendment-protected expressive merchandise and displays on sidewalks by amending section 5.14.10 thereof to add new definitions by amending section 5.14.020 to clarify the purpose of chapter by amending section 5.14.040 to remove the business license requirement and providing other matters property related thereto.
Okay, before we take a motion, we've got a couple of people wish to speak. Wait a minute.
No, no.
Not on this agenda. No, go ahead. Motion?
Motion.
Have motion, it's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. I14.
Bill Number 6897, Ordinance to amend Title VIII of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Public Peace, Safety, and Morals by amending Chapter 8.23 thereof, entitled Parks and Recreation by amending section 8.23.075, entitled Park Permits by exempting display and sales of First Amendment-protected expressive merchandise and providing other matters property relating thereto.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. I14.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. I14.
Don't you woke me up.
Wait, really quickly, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. White, thank you for all your hard work. I know this has been 12 years in the making, and I'm really proud of it. But I will also say, I am so impressed with Mr. Shipman and Mrs. Toller and Michael Chomp and Tracy Chase. You guys, you made me so proud in that room. It was just unbelievable. And I just think that it speaks volumes to who you guys are. And I just want to remind this body to remember about art when it comes to economic development. It is one of your top priorities. So, when people just say, oh, it's just art, art is incredibly important. So, just remember that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Just, it's been an emotional struggle for me for all these years. Don't thank me, I'm just a messenger. If you want to say thanks, everybody, tonight, when you go to bed, say a little prayer for all those little children that suffered that day in Columbine, and say a little prayer for all the children that have suffered since then. And what do you say, we all start working towards delivering the gift of humanity back to all of the children in our country? So, say a little prayer for them if you want to thank me.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. God bless.
Thank you. Now, we go to item I2.
Which is Bill Number 6898, Ordinance to amend Title IV, entitled Business License Code by adding a new section 4.04.067, entitled Moratorium on the Acceptance of Business License Applications for Pet Stores Intending to Conduct Sales of Cat, excuse me, Dogs, Cats, or Rabbits, and Providing the Moratorium shall be in effect for a period not to exceed 180 days from the date of adoption, and Providing other matters property relating thereto.
Move to refer.
Have motion, second. All in favor say aye.
I have a few questions
Wait a minute.
About this.
I have a couple of people wish to speak
Oh, okay.
Before I take this vote.
Okay.
Joshua Chavez?
Sir.
You wish to speak?
Yes.
Come on up.
How you guys doing today? This is frightening, actually. But what I'm here to say is actually, excuse me?
Name for the record.
Oh, my name? Yeah, it's Joshua Chavez. And what I'm trying to say is actually, I've got, I've got my dog from a pet store, and I understand that getting, getting an animal is actually more, more than just getting a dog, buying him food. It's really an emotional attachment. I've always been raised around animals, even as a kid. My first dog was a rottweiler, considered a violent breed to most, but sweetest dog I've ever known. I also work at a pet store, and I've seen, I've seen a lot of things in pet stores. I've heard a lot of things. I've heard stories of loss. I've heard stories of, I, I've never felt happier just because I own a dog, cat, bird, spiders, snakes. It's just something about having that companionship really got me into working in a pet store. I've always worked in retail. I've, I've honestly, I've never gone home with a sense of achievement, or at least more respons, more responsible as a person than after I get off of work now. Because it's not a pair of shoes that I'm dealing with, it's not a shirt, it's not something material. It's literally a living, breathing thing. And being able to take care of that and then send someone home with that ability to take care of their dog is just, I don't know how to say, is just really, like, it gives me an entitlement of just being proud. And I, I understand that it's a touchy subject because everyone wants to adopt and adopt, and it's, it's a great thing, but at the same time, we, they also provide a service that helps you, you know, eliminate the, the areas that you don't see by going to a, a dog that's being handed out in front of Walmart that says free puppies, or somebody going to a backyard and just seeing it. At least at a pet store, you can see what, how do I say it? You can see them interact with other dogs. You can see them interact with people. And in that way, it helps a lot of people just get, get over a lot of, a lot of problems that people do have. I got my dog because I experienced a lot of loss in my family, and nothing, nothing feels a lot better than coming home and actually having someone there that wants to be there with you. I know you guys have kids, and there was a time that your kids were eventually can't wait to see you, and now they're probably teenagers, and they can't get off their computers or anything, but a dog does not care. As soon as you come home, he's there. You have a bad day, they're there. You, you are happy, going on a family barbecue, the dog's there with your memories. And that's just, that's just what I feel. Don't, don't take that away from people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joseph Young?
Hi, City Council. My name's Joseph Young. Over the past 38 years, I've had many jobs and businesses in the city of Reno. One of my current businesses now is owning a pet store. By far, this is the most difficult business I've ever done. I've had car stereo shops, I've had nightclubs, I had bars, and I've had a pet store. Dealing with living, breathing things that require lots of attention, really difficult. Me and my associates are willing to work with the city and the fellow citizens like Billy Howard to fight against animal cruelty, no problem, but not to ban animal sales. A lot of animal groups make false accusations based on assumptions and not facts. A ban of animal sales will only promote backyard breeders who are not subject to any guidelines or city regulations at all. Washoe County Animal Control visits our store frequently, and so do local vets in the area. We, we are constantly working in the store to make it a better environment for animals and to our customers. Once again, in closing, me and my associates are willing to work with the city and any individual against animal cruelty at any, any measures we can take, not the ban of animal sales. There has to be compromises that everyone can agree to. Thank you for your time, distinguished council members.
Thank you. Michael Snyder?
Washoe County Animal Control visits our store frequently, and so do local vets in the area. We, we are constantly working in the store to make it a better environment for animals and to our customers. Once again, in closing, me and my associates are willing to work with the city and any individual against animal cruelty at any, any measures we can take, not the ban of animal sales. There has to be compromises that everyone can agree to. Thank you for your time, distinguished council members.
Thank you. Michael Schneider?
Michael Schneider, owner of Puppies Plus. And I'm in opposing to this ordinance being passed as well. For one thing, I am totally against animal cruelty, which I'm sure all of us in this room are. And one thing that we, we know that it really exists out there and, and we need to do away with it. But by banning the retail sale of, of dogs, cats, and rabbits, et cetera, will only open a can of worms. I assure you that the, the backyard breeders will increase rapidly. And you hear the word puppy mill going around and puppy mill. And our, our community really needs to be educated on what is a puppy mill. A puppy mill is not a pet store, or, I know the, the pet stores here, I can speak for my own, that all of my puppies in my store are from USDA licensed breeders. They're government regulated. So the banning of, of these retail sales of something that's regulated by the government, it's, to me, it's contradictory. And, and I am totally for, you know, stopping the cruelty and then puppy mills, they're, you know, the, the inbreeding of puppies. But one thing that I can assure you, that everything that goes on in my store, it is, they're, they're regulated and I'm, right now in the process, I've even worked with the Nevada Board of Veterinary Examiners to create a code of conduct to, to post in stores, to educate pet store owners about the do's and the don'ts of selling the animals, what we can do and what we can't do. But banning retail sales of these animals, it, it would be the wrong, really, the wrong thing to do because it would just open a can of worms like I spoke earlier. And I know that, it's, like Joe spoke earlier, it's, it's a tough business. You know, we're, we're dealing with live animals and it's, it's very, it's a sensitive matter. But I assure you that if we can come together in this, and we're open for suggestions as pet store owners, to, to move forward and, and do what's best for the animals. But we, I don't want to see backyard breeders just explode and they, they need to be regulated. Everything needs to be regulated if it's going to be sold. And I'm all for the ordinances of, against animal cruelty, but not banning the sale of retail animals. Thank you. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, for clarity, this motion that, this resolution that is in front of us, I initiated for one specific reason, and it isn't what was spoken to in public comment at all. You who have pet stores currently will be able to continue to operate your pet stores and hopefully in a legal, humane way.
That's correct.
This resolution will prevent any new, new applications from being accepted for pet stores, any additional ones. It has no impact on how you are operating today, in your good conscience or not. It will only prevent new pet store applications. We will be looking at the operations with Washoe County to bring corrections and modifications into ordinances in the future, and that's where your input will be needed in the future, to have good pet store operations that aren't getting dogs from puppy mills that are ill and not cared for.
Right. May I speak?
And this, and this moratorium is for 180 days to give our staff the time to take a look at the ordinance and see what other things they can put in the ordinance to help prevent a lot of the issues that have been brought up, including the issues that you've addressed. So it's, it's really to say, hey, let's put a, put a halt on everything, and give us, give our staff a chance to look at the ordinance, to determine what changes can be made to the ordinance, so that we do make sure that we have good operators.
Right.
And it gives us that 180 days to, to analyze that. And that's really what this process is for.
Right. I, I'm for that. But if this process, you know, opens the door for, you know, further action being taken and I'm totally eliminating the retail sales, it's a door opening if, if this is passed. That's, that's a true fact. It's not like it's, it's swept under the table after, because we have, there's a movement. These, you know, animal activists, they, they, they're moving, trying to ban, not just for that under 180 days, but they're trying to ban it totally. So...
This ordinance is simply to not accept any new applications for an additional pet store to be applied for in our community for 180 days.
I understand.
And I would encourage you to be at the table as we have the discussions. I mean, I'm sure that there's going to be a process in place, you know, to meet with operators and, and the, the public alike, so that staff can get a good idea of, of what they're looking at and what changes might, they might want to make to these ordinances. And I would encourage you to, to participate in those conversations.
Absolutely, I will.
Are, are there of the pet store owners here today, are they the ones that have a sign about financing for puppies?
I am, yes.
Okay, this is a question that I have. So if someone comes in and you offer financing to purchase a puppy, what happens if the, the financing breaks down? Do you, do they bring the puppy back and...
No, there is not a repossession process and it's just, it really messes our credit up, that's what it's based on. So they're allowed to keep the puppy, if that answers your question.
Okay, so you're offering, as the, as the business owner, you're offering personal financing?
No, I, I have an agency that offers financing if their, their income and their, their credit allows it. I'm just like a third party in that.
Got it. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more person that wishes, I'm sorry. Daniel Gray?
Hi, my name's Daniel Gray. First off, I wanted to thank everybody for having me here today. You know, pretty much everybody covered, you know, most of the stuff that I wanted to cover today. And going forward, I just want to, you know, make sure that you guys really think about the decisions that you guys do make in the future. You know, especially about the backyard breeder growth, because that will be a really, really big problem. A little bit of background about me, I'm a part of a group of a couple thousand people in the state of Nevada. We're all about responsible animal ownership. We have a program here in Washoe County where we go to schools and bring animals and we educate children. Even, we even go to TMCC and educate the more growner children, how to, you know, care for animals and just pretty much about animals in general. And, you know, all around responsible animal, animal ownership, because it is a really big thing and it needs to be addressed. Part of my thing, like I said with this, is, is the biggest thing about it is if you guys do work towards, you know, banning the sales of dogs, cats, rabbits, ferrets, whatever it does lead, is, like I said, it's going to open up a big door for backyard breeders, which is not regulated. It's going to have a lot more issues with parvo, rabies, multiple other situations where it's, you know, they're not controlled, they're not veterinary inspected, just, you know, a big bunch, you know, like Mike was saying, a big can of worms that it would open up. Also, you know, to address these puppy mill situations that have been getting cracked down on, are not USDA facilities usually, and are, you know, breeding illegally. To be a USDA facility is more, if you have one, more than one female, you have to be USDA licensed. So you have to have a federal license, which you are randomly inspected, you have to have a veterinarian come and inspect all your animals yearly. And like I said, you know, I, there is a lot of controversy about puppy mills and what it really is. But other than that, I just wanted to, for my closing statement, I just wanted to put that there is a difference between animal rights and animal welfare. And that's a very, very big thing that a lot of people mix and they really, really don't understand, that there is a difference between animal rights and animal welfare. And I would hope that everybody would, you know, it's pretty simple, but kind of see where that stands and just remember that, you know, if you, it's regulated, it's controlled, it's inspected. If anything, you know, regulate it more. But other than that, a lot of the problems in other states is that they have been closing puppy stores and stuff like that, and it's just been opening up a bigger problem. And I hope everybody can, you know, think about it and come to a decision that would kind of suit everybody. Because I know in 10 years, I want my kids to have pets and, you know, be able to deal with animals. And if there aren't places to offer them, then most likely, you know, there will not be. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other public comments, all? Absolutely. Please come up, and then when you're done, will you fill out another blue card, so that we have it for the record?
Thank you. Billy Howard, Puppy Mill Free Reno. We'd like to, and we're in support of this measure. Thank you very much, council members, for bringing the issue this far forward, as you have. We're excited to have a 180-day ban on the issuing of new licenses. We think that this whole process, as we go down the road, is going to be win-win-win. Win certainly for these poor animals who are growing up in sickening conditions. The way to, of course, keep things where animals are kept in good conditions. We found that studies show that across the country, you want to remove the pet out of the pet store. And that across the area, what we have are multiple, and I mentioned them in my opening statement, stores that sell everything but the pet, all the supplies you need, once you acquire your pet, which would be, I think, the best thing that's, we've seen across the country in many other cities, 48 that have passed this ban so far, where people are able to adopt animals, 25% of which are in shelters, are purebreds. So if you really need to have a purebred, you'll probably find one there. Or if not, you'll find them with reputable breeders who are exempted or not included in the ban that we hope to see down the road. Or rescue organizations, which is kind of exciting because you'll find a rescue for any animal that you're looking for, a rottweiler. But you can also find one that maybe is one years old. So if you're a little bit older, you're not just getting the puppy, that may be too much for you. We think it's a win for consumers because in the studies that we've read from across the country, of which there are numerous ones, and you'll be seeing them, animals that come out of these puppy mills where the animal is not well cared for are quite ill. And down the road, there may be multiple and very high expenses. So we think that the consumer will win in this. I'm working with the county for language on Friday. We're working in Carson and Douglas Counties and Churchill Counties, and we're hoping that we'll see a ban region-wide. And I think that will give us a lot of good press across the country. There are a lot of cities that are getting good press, but if we have an entire region, which is north, northern Nevada, that is implementing this ban, it will do a lot for civic pride. It'll, it'll do a lot because we're known as one of the most animal-friendly counties in the country. Douglas County as well is also a low-kill, no-kill shelter. So we look forward to working with you as this moves forward. And we thank Ms. Zodra for bringing this to us in the first place, and Ms. Shivi for her activism, and of course, the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if I could get you to fill out another one of those blue cards, so we've got it for the record, that would be great. Have you no other public comment? I'm going to close the public comments section, bring it back to the table.
I have a few questions. Staff, so, you know, we've gone down this route before where we banned or capped uses. And I'm thinking pawn shops, I'm thinking liquor licenses downtown. Then you kind of get a monopolistic situation, it kind of mess, can mess with the market a little bit. And I think this time, we need to think about that. How many of these retail licenses are currently issued in the city of Reno? Did we go through that exercise yet? If you haven't, that's fine, I understand.
I believe we have about, Fred Turnier, Community Development Director, I believe we have about four licenses.
Four, okay. So the, the way Councilmember Zodra is talking about is maybe there'd be an overlay or a reformatting of regulations that currently exist, and those could apply to these four, which then will be, you know, market controlling the retail puppy environment, if they're not amortized, which, you know, that's always an option. Are you going to look at all these things? Have the, have you been thinking of, you know, these kind of, they're not necessarily about the animals, they're more about the business and the environment?
Just from a processing and operation standpoint, there are a couple of things that we'll be looking at, which includes just from the operations, working with the county on some of their proposed new regulations and ensuring that they're meeting the needs of, of the city, all the way to looking at something similar to what we did with downtown liquor stores.
Okay.
And so during this 180-day period, that's our opportunity to go and look at these different options and, and to bring it back before the city council.
Okay. And then these, you know, backyard breeders, whatever that is, the home business occupation license, does that allow for puppy or, or animal breeding? I mean, because it's not perform, it's not use-based, it's performance-based. Do we see a lot of, I mean, how many puppies could one sell out of their residence on any given year? A lot?
Well, it's my understanding, and Joe Henry will, can come up and answer some of that, is that, that's not allowed for puppies?
Or cats?
It doesn't, for the record, Joseph Henry, Acting Code Enforcement Manager. Our code does not address animal breeding. That is all handled through Washoe County Code and through state law. So the home-based business license doesn't address it at all, because most of those usually, your average person who breeds their dog is not really doing it as a business, they just, they breed their dog. For the backyard breeder who's, who's doing that, he hasn't gotten a Washoe County kennel permit, he hasn't got a city of Reno business license, he usually doesn't advertise except through, either something like Craigslist or, or other methods. So the fact that they're illegal now doesn't change the fact that if, if we did ban, would more of them pop up? That's a possibility. It'd be an enforcement issue as far as getting Washoe County out there. They do address that issue right now, though.
With a kennel? I mean...
With a kennel permit.
Permit, and you can get those in our single-family zoning district? And how many can you have? How many, how many animals? Yeah. There's a number, is there a number?
There is a number.
Okay.
I believe is you can have up to four dogs without a kennel permit.
Without a kennel permit.
And cats, I'm not really sure.
And those include pets, your own pets, right?
That's your pets, yes.
Okay, okay. But our business license is, you know, performance-based, so it's, if someone is, you know, suspected of having too many animals on their premise, whether or not they're selling them, it, it really is getting a kennel license is their option.
Right, and going through Washoe County.
Okay, okay, okay. I see that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have an answer for this, and maybe it's something through further research, it will come out, is, I guess one of my questions is, obviously, we have many big box pet stores, and they don't sell cats or dogs, and there's obviously a reason for that. And I'm going to guess it's not financial. So I'd just like to know why some of the big retailers don't sell dogs and cats.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we've got a motion in a second, don't we? Got a motion in a second? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we've got item J1.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, City Manager Renee Ringes, Director of Human Resources, for the record. You have an item before you propose changes and amendments to the civil service rules for the city of Reno. On March 5th, these rules were published and noticed, and they have a lot of updates and clarity, clarification issues, as well as some items that were changed in the city charter due to the last legislative session. And the most substantive of these changes relates to Rule 7 for temporary and provisional appointments. Staff has reviewed these changes and are comfortable with them. The commission is going to be considering them at their evening meeting tomorrow, March 27th. And kind of a little bit of background on this, there were some concerns that were raised about temporary appointments and responsibilities and authority between the commission, the chief examiner, and the city manager as it relates to temporary employees who work more than 18 hours per week. And so additionally, the commission had a concern that there would be a break in service between the time one temporary position was filled and completed and another one was started by the same employee. And during the course of the review, the commission did consider ratify and extend temporary appointments in February of 14, 2014, for certain employees who work more than 18 hours a week through June 30th of 2014, in an effort to implement these rule changes. And most of these positions are in the part... And most of these positions are in the Parks, Recreation and Community Services Department. And it is not anticipated that there will be any more requests to the commission for extensions of any temporary employment positions. The proposed rule changes that you have before you are the changes that the commission is going to consider tomorrow evening. The only issue is an addendum that was issued when the rules were sent for publication, and that is on page four of your staff report. And this was added to reiterate that there would be a break in service between temporary appointment positions for the same employee. Staff's concern is that it does not hinder a temporary employee from applying for a regular city position that, for example, could be limited term due to grant funding, or for a non-civil service position, like an appointive position, that are listed in the Reno Municipal Code. Staff, however, is confident that at the meeting tomorrow night, we'll be able to agree on some language with the commission, and/or at least have the intent of this rule codified in the minutes, so that there won't be any confusion in the future. And so what we are asking the council today is to support staff's recommendation that we are comfortable with these changes. The charter also allows for city manager comment at the meeting tomorrow evening, which is the method in which we can accomplish any language or intent items that need to be codified in the minutes for this item. And with that, I will take any questions.
You go ahead, you're the liaison.
Yeah, and I want to thank staff. I mean, I think we first started addressing this issue November-ish, I think, maybe before that? October, November?
Yes.
And, I mean, there were some issues that were brought up that could have really damaged our ability to operate the city, I think, at the time. And I just want to thank staff and the Civil Service Commission for working through this, and coming with some common ground and some conclusions that everyone can agree upon. I think it was great work, and I'm hearing that we are where we need to be.
Yes, thank you. It was a team effort, for sure.
Yeah, so thank you.
Well, I'll echo that. I think good work for you and your staff, and Madam Assistant City Manager, and Tracy Chase, I think, put a lot of time into this, and Parks Director, Ms. Conway. So it is nice, and of course, all on the Civil Service Commission, their staff, and the individuals. So I'm happy to see we're moving in a good way, and a lot of cleanup that needed to occur. I guess, you know, one comment I noticed, and maybe it's just, you know, something that we need to start thinking about, there's a comment about an appeal can be made to the mayor and city council. I think the real language, you know, is to the city council, maybe, you know, when we see things, we need to start realizing, you know, mayor and city council, city council. That's my comment independently, and I think that's a more correct reading. I'd like elaboration on your point just now, because I am, this addendum that came through, I'm not quite understanding it, and there's another issue that I'm tracking, and that is our use of employment agencies. And, you know, I think I'm seeing that we're shifting a lot of people to employment agencies, and to me, that's even less transparent to understand who's doing what, who's qualified to do what, how many of those people, positions do we have being filled in that way? But that's a discussion, I think, for another day. But what are you asking the clarification? Could you explain that more clearly to me?
Yes, the way the addendum is written, it says that if an individual has one temp position, say for six months, and then at the end of six months, they move to a less-than-18-hour-a-week position, which is exempted by the city charter immediately. In other words, there's no break in service. And that's what this rule, or this addendum, is intending to stop. The staff's concern is, this temp employee could apply for a regular city job that might be exempt from civil service, for example, a limited-term grant-funded position, and/or an appointive position that is referenced either in the city charter or the Reno Municipal Code, so that that would not hinder that person's ability to apply for one of those positions.
I don't see how that, this language would do something like that. I mean, not using, Simon Stieger, prior, civil, city service under a non-civil, without first completing the requisite, okay.
I think they're just going to get the clarification tomorrow from the Civil Service Commission, is all they're asking.
Non-civil service appointment without first completing the six-month break in service. Oh, I see. Under a non-civil service appointment. Okay, and you know, that gets to my other question. Is a non-civil service appointment position, is that going to work for a temporary agency? It's a position.
It's a position. I don't think that this...
If they're working for a temporary agency, they wouldn't be impacted by this.
No, I don't think so. This is a...
They could be under a temporary appointment, under the rule, and then go straight on to the employment agency.
Yes.
But, well, I guess that's true, but the point being, if they are employed by a temp agency...
They're not employed by the city.
They could only be employed here six months as a temp employee. Or they could be employed as less than 18 hours a week, and still comply with the rule in that way. However, if that same employee was a temp employee that worked six months, and then the city would hire them as a less-than-18-hour-per-week, that would be in conflict with this addendum.
Everyone on the temp agency's position is less than six months?
Would be less than six months or less than 18 hours.
That's how all of our temporary employees under those contracts are working. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might too, I just want to clarify a comment that was made by Councilwoman Brekis. I mean, we do have some, you know, they're not employees, but we do have people who are employed by employment agencies, but your comment that we're moving people to employment agencies, to my knowledge, is not true. So I just want to clarify that for the record.
Okay, well, I don't, I've never seen a list of what positions are being filled by the employment agencies, and so, you know, I thought that was a get-around of all those temps, that we had moved those, a lot of those over to those temporary agencies, when we brought those contracts forward. Wasn't that...
Not to my knowledge. And we can certainly bring you back a list of who is out there...
Correct.
...that's employed by an employment agency, but we are not moving...
Yeah, and I think that's helpful, because it lets us know where we have gaps in positions, and it also lets us know, you know, a greater understanding of the composition of our workforce.
In addition, I think that the contracts that the city considered, the city council considered and approved, were just in the event the city needed to hire an employee through a temporary agency at some point in the future.
Yeah, but I keep seeing accounts payable going out to those services. Checks getting cut to those agencies.
And we do have some, but...
Yeah, we do have some, and we can bring back a list of what those are, but I just want to clarify for the record, I mean, we are not in an attempt to sort of circumvent these rules, shifting employees to employment agencies. We're not doing that.
Move to accept staff recommendations, and, Mr. Mayor, that's with huge, huge appreciation, Renee, to you and staff. I know that this has been, right through the holidays too, as I recall, that this was generated, that just broke tradition, you know, working the weekends through the holiday, and you've done tremendous work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And also, Assistant City Manager Matievich was a great resource in this as well, as well as Tracy Chase.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J3, J2, I mean, didn't have my goggles on. Have a motion, have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go to boards and commission, recreation...
Continue, please.
Continue the advertising. Identification of future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I had, actually, a gentleman brought it up today, and I just wanted to see if there was, if we could initiate some traffic study relative to a crosswalk at Fourth and Record Street?
Fourth and Record.
I think there was a memo on that one already.
Was there?
Yeah.
Maybe I can just get the update on that.
It was something, and it's real close to a stoplight, too.
Is that what it was?
I think it was the train tracks.
Yeah, it is by the train tracks, and that's why you couldn't...
I wonder if there's an opportunity to have one kind of a little further down, because with the development of Fourth Street...
You could do one at the red light, that's a block away, half a block away. Huh? Yeah.
I think there's a place for a crosswalk on that mid-block somewhere.
Right now, with the train there, I don't see one by the homeless, by Record Street.
Well, maybe somewhere in the vicinity, and the only reason I say it is with the expansion of some of the businesses on Fourth Street, and the foot traffic, and, you know, the positively Fourth Street events that we have and stuff there that...
The majority of the people are using the crosswalk that's up by the corner, by the bus station, and there's also, I think, another one the next block down by Catholic Community Services. There might be one we could put at Catholic Community Services.
And maybe the memo already came out, and if I could just get the, yeah, just follow...
We'll follow up on it. Any other items?
I was just wondering when the graffiti task force report's coming up, because I didn't see it on the three-month calendar. Is it on? Is it on here? I don't see it. Okay.
Okay, any other items for future agenda items? Any liaison reports? Ms. Brekis?
I don't have any.
Ms. Zadra? Mr. Delgado? Mr. Dorich? Ms. Jordan?
Yes, a quick one from the Special Events Subcommittee. Excited to say that we have 51 special events that have put in applications for our special event season this year, which is a 30% increase over last year.
Ms. Sheevy? Ms. Zadra? I did you, didn't I? All right, item L3, records of any conference or committee meetings. Item L4, Ms. Brekis?
Resolution...
Motion second. Whoop, you've got a resolution to read, don't you?
Guys are a little fast. Resolution number...
You guys got to speed up over there.
7956, resolution donating council donation funds to the Turkey River Foundation to host the 2014 Stay afloat Safety Fair, promoting river awareness and safety in the amount of $1,000.
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Do I have any public comment card? Having no public comment, my favorite motion. Motion to adjourn the second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. This meeting's adjourned. Is it three?